Officially.
Everybody hear me? Yep. Good. Yeah.
Just a reminder, we are currently recording. I'm still waiting for a few more people. I don't see Veronica or Tom on the line yet.
Hey. Tom's here.
Okay, Mike, it looks like we have all council members on the line. And it's only 3:58, but when it's four o'clock, we'll be ready to start the meeting.
Sure. Thank you. Trying to get all my documents up here. There you go. There's Veronica.
This conference will now be recorded.
Alex, is there anyone else joining us by video?
Uh, I think this, this is it. I, I think this is it here.
All right. Okay, well, uh, we can get started if that's okay. All right, good. Okay, welcome everyone to the city council meeting of May 20th, 2020. And hopefully this will be the last video meeting that we have. Uh, it's, uh, that's going to be my recommendation when we, uh, when we end the meeting. So at this time, I would like to call this meeting to order of the May 20th, 2020 city council meeting of the city of Los Banos. And would you please, Chief Breezy, uh, please lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
Sure. I pledge allegiance
To the
United States and the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as a prior.
Thank you. Okay, let's go on to roll call. Uh, and, uh, city, uh, uh, city director, um, Maloney. Director Maloney, roll call.
Furia.
Here.
Johnson Santos. Jones.
Here.
Lewis.
Here.
Valalta.
Here, we do have a forum. Okay, so I would ask everyone, uh, remind everyone who called in to mute their phones unless they are getting ready to call, uh, for a motion or a second. Respond to a roll call or speak, uh, into, uh, the, uh, your microphone and unmute it, uh, when asked to. So I'll try with public comments also to, to make sure that I, uh, I go through a, uh, a list of council members. So each one who would like to speak, as we've done in the past, will be able to do so, and I don't miss anything. All right, so let's go on to item four, consideration of approval of agenda. And do I have a motion?
I'll move to approve the agenda submitted.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
It's been motioned by Furia and seconded by, uh, Johnson Santos for the approval of the agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, let's go to Mr. Mr. Furia.
Yep.
Johnson Santos?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Valalta, yes. Motion carried five zero. Okay, let's go on to, uh, item number five, public forum. And I would ask that unless, uh, there is any objection, if you have a COVID-19 question, we can then answer those questions because during the public forum, you can ask a question, but we can't answer. But during a specific topic, because it's agendized, if you have a question on COVID-19 and related to the business openings, then we can answer those questions during the COVID-19 report. So let me read the public forum. Members of the public may address the city council on any following consent agenda items. Speakers may submit their comments or agenda items by submitting a written statement or by dropping it off in the utility payment box at City Hall at 520 J Street by mail or emailing cityclerk@lostbanos.org. Comments received will be read into the record during the city council meeting. So I'm going to ask on the line first, is there anyone who has a, uh, public forum comment other than COVID-19 and related business openings? Okay, not, not seeing or hearing anyone and not seeing any hands, thank you. Okay, Director Maloney, I'm going to ask you that same question.
I have multiple responses and comments, but they're all COVID-related.
Thank you. So we will be reading those into the record at the, uh, at the time of the COVID-19 report. Is that correct?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, so if there are no other comments at the public forum that aren't, are, uh, are not, uh, COVID-19, then I will close the public forum and I will go on to consideration of approval of consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda are considered to be routine and will be voted on on one motion unless removed from the consent agenda by a city council member. And tonight we have, Director Maloney?
Items on the consent agenda are as follows. Warrant numbers 221979 through 222243 in the amount of $525,040.34 minutes for the May 6th, 2020 city council meeting. City Council Resolution Number 6209, approving a side letter memorandum of understanding, contract extension through September 30th, 2020 by and between the city of Los Banos and the Los Banos Police Sergeants Association. City Council Resolution Number 6210, approving and adopting final tract map number 2019-01 Mission Village South Phase 5A and accompanying subdivision improvement agreement, Stonefield Home, Inc. City Council Resolution Number 6211, authorizing the city manager to execute a Measure V local funding agreement with Merced County Association of Governments for the administration of the local projects funding from Measure V. City Council Resolution Number 6212, approving amendment number three to professional services agreement with CSG Consultants, Inc. for plan check and building inspection services for an additional one year. City Council Resolution Number 6213, accepting the Fire Station 1 and 2 Americans with Disability Act and State Streets Sidewalk Improvement Project as complete and authorizing the filing of a notice of completion with the Merced County Recorder. City Council Resolution Number 6214, authorizing entering into a second amendment to lease agreement between the city of Los Banos and Marlene Pennington for rental of the Ranchwood Park facility for an additional five years. And the items are to be approved as submitted.
Is there any council member who would like to remove a consent agenda item for discussion? Start with Mr. Furia?
None, no.
Johnson Santos?
No.
Jones?
None.
Lewis?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to pull item G, as in George.
All right, and Valalta has none. So do I have a motion to approve items A through H minus item G?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, excuse me, I would like to make the motion to approve the consent agenda as submitted minus item letter number G.
Do I have a second?
Mayor, I'll second that.
Okay, I have a motion by Lewis to approve items A through H minus item G for discussion and by Lewis and seconded by Jones. All in favor? I'll call again. Furia?
Yep.
Johnson Santos?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
And Valalta, yes. Okay, carried unanimously. Let's go on to Mrs. Lewis for item G. Go ahead, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, first of all, I just wanted to give, um, uh, thanks to our Public Works Department, uh, to Measure V and, uh, for consideration to give this neighborhood of the streets over by Los Banos Airport, Colorado, Vermont, Pennsylvania, and Maryland, the sidewalks that these residents have deserved for many, many years. Um, this was an issue around safety and, um, it, it really makes me happy to know now that, uh, the residents who live in that community and their children no longer have to walk in the street to get from point A to point B. So thank you again. Thank you to the taxpayers and thank you to our staff for, uh, hearing me out with my gripes about no sidewalks over there and the many years that they lived without it. Uh, they were deserving to have them, just like everybody else in our city. So again, thank you very much, and that's my comment, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mrs. Lewis, and those properties go back to the, the early 1950s. And that's during the time when, uh, when they were allowed to, uh, to build and, uh, did not consider that the sidewalks were essential and rolled curbs. So, uh, it's, it's very gratifying to see that, uh, playing in that neighborhood for all those years growing up as a, as a kid and, and not having any sidewalks when I used to visit friends. Uh, so, uh, so thank you very much and it's, it's well deserved. Mark, thank you for managing that project. It, uh, it, it worked out really well. So with that, Mrs. Lewis, would you like to make a motion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve item letter G on the consent agenda as submitted.
Do I have a second?
Mayor, I'll second that.
Thank you. I have a motion by Lewis, seconded by Jones to approve, uh, G on the consent agenda as read by title, City Council Resolution Number 6213. And Furia?
Yep.
Johnson Santos?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Valalta, yes. Okay, have to remember to answer myself. Okay, let's go on to item seven. COVID-19 status update. So, um, I'm, I'm thinking, Council, should we hear comments from the public? And then we can have, uh, the, uh, I see Becky. Hi, Becky. So, uh, have her give her presentation after the comments so we can get all the information out and then possibly have a more informed report. Council, what do you think?
I would be okay with that. I would like to see the, hear the, uh, the public comment.
Okay, Mr. Furia, you okay with that?
Yeah.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Lewis?
Well, I'm, I'm going to differ on this because I think, uh, if, if we're going to have a presentation by someone from our health department, uh, some of those questions may be answered, uh, of the public during that time, but it's up to the council majority.
Okay, okay. Uh, well, I, I'd like to give, because, because the reason I would say, uh, read the comments first is because then Becky can alter her, uh, her presentation as, uh, as they speak and, and have these questions already up. Is that okay? Is that okay, Becky? Uh, you're muted. I can't hear you. Nope, not yet.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, this is Council Member Louis.
Yes.
I was under the impression that, uh, these were going to be live questions, so oh, I didn't realize that they were going to be written questions submitted to the council, and that's why I made my statement.
Oh, okay, all right, okay, all right. Uh, Becky can, uh, I don't think we can hear you. No, we're having some technical difficulties. So I want to make sure, can you hear me, Becky? Okay, I, I see you nodding, but, but we can't hear you. Your mic says on.
It's not anything on our side.
So is there, yeah, your mic says on according to this. Well, since she can hear you, uh, Director Maloney, why don't you read the questions? And then Becky can listen to those and then try and fix the audio problems, uh, while she's listening.
Okay, there, there are about 25 written comments.
Uh huh. Uh, well, start reading.
Okay, so I'm going to go ahead and read the first one.
Yeah.
Okay, dear city of Los Banos, non-essential, those are now the words on the tip of everyone's tongue. Essential is a word that can mean different things to many different people. Now this purely subjective distinction has greatly impacted the industry of vulnerable workers. We are the face of the salon industry here in Merced County. As you are aware, salon services have been deemed non-essential in California. This is not only degrading to our choice of career, but deep, debilitating to our livelihoods. We are coming forward today to ask the local government for some crucial requests. We have been forced to shut down our business and livelihoods due to the COVID-19 emergency shelter-in-place restrictions. It has now been 10 weeks without work or pay. We are people who do not usually receive any help from government programs or assistance. We file our taxes as sole proprietors or independent contractors, not allowing us to qualify for many business relief programs. 90% of us pay a monthly workstation rent and owners pay a monthly commercial rent on top of our household financial responsibilities. We are truly grateful for the unemployment insurance benefits now available to us. However, most independent contractors are having much difficulty applying due to inexperience with the system and the current overburdened assistance centers. We are aware of the effects and potential threat COVID-19 has on local and worldwide communities. We are licensed cosmetologists and barbers deemed qualified by the state to implement and carry out state-mantated infection control and sanitation procedures. We are confident we can open for business while maintaining a sanitized, safe, compliant workplace. Our services improve morale and personal hygiene in the committee. We are, we argue our services are no different than restaurants, animal groomers, stores, or banks, et cetera. We, a community that has been socially silenced, are standing up to ask our local and state government for assistance and consideration. We would like to submit lists of requests we see necessary for our profession's survival. A representative that offers services assistance for the salon industry in applying for government assistant programs and/or relief aid. Giving us a stay-at-home incentive, offering easy access to government relief, offering additional stimulus or financial relief for as long as we are closed, giving us a direct timeframe for which we may proceed, offering services again, giving salon owners rent relief or rent forgiveness, letting us open business with strict health guidelines and frequent inspections, letting us go back to work with signed consent forms by every patron, letting us work from home or travel with the customer's consent, letting us do an outdoor open-air work arrangement, giving us a tax incentive for the loss. These are just some of the requests we bring forward. The salon industry may never recover from this socially or economically. We have patiently stayed home to flatten the curve and relieve our healthcare system. It is now time to relieve us from what we, what has now turned into a financial disaster. We are asking for the same accommodations that have already been made to so many others, such as the restaurant industry, liquor stores, and so many other so-called essential businesses. We are proud to be Californians and have faith that our government will take care of its people, including the allegedly non-essential. Thank you, we, this, we, the saloon industry of Merced County, California. And that's from Shay Hernandez. Um, the next one is from Greg and Lisa O'Banion. To the city manager in the city of Los Banos, as patrons of many businesses in Los Banos, we have greatly, we have been greatly affected by the strict guidelines set in place as a result of the COVID virus. There is no longer a legitimate reason for standing in line outside of a business during hot weather conditions or allowing only one resident per household to enter at a time. Considering we live in a green state, how is this right when we carpool from Dust Palace to Walmart or other grocery stores that are denied entry because we rode in the same car? Let businesses and restaurants open, let people get back to work. Continuance of these strict guidelines are only going to weaken our immune systems and extend this pandemic. Like kindergarteners starting school for the first one, it's time. Don't force us to take our business to larger towns with much more to offer. Let's use some common sense, open up and allow us to shop local and dine in. Thank you. And again, that was from Greg and Lisa O'Banion.
Thank you.
Um, this next one is from Alicia Rojas. She writes, lift the face mask requirement. Face masks are making us sick. It's restricting our fresh air intake. Um, the next one is from Rosa Garcia. She writes, to whom it may concern, I deal with patients on a daily basis. They vent their feelings of this pandemic to me, which seems to lead many falling into depression, anxiety, et cetera. Churches are essential for our community. Our children are suffering at home with watching TV, being online all day, no parks to run to, nowhere to just interact with kids their own age. At least if they can be with their youth group, they will have interaction. Adults need to be encouraged and online church doesn't help all those that are hurting and in need of that godly interaction. Church is essential and is our constitutional right. Please consider opening our churches. The sheriff agrees. When will you agree? Mayor says in the last meeting you will all be judged. Well, being judged should scare you because stopping those that are hurting and in need of God means their lives are in your hands and in their souls. I pray that God opens your spiritual eyes and know what we are really fighting. I pray that God opens your spiritual eyes and know what we are really fighting against. Please open our churches. Um, the next one is from Nicole Flores. I am a licensed esthetician. I own my own business. I am an independent contractor at Unabella Saloon. I'd like to start by saying every job is essential, not because what we do, but because it's how we earn a living. We are compassionate humans and we care about health and safety of clients and others. As a state licensed esthetician, I can assure you we can open and keep others safe by utilizing what we learned in our curriculum in order to test for our state board's license, which is a large part includes safety and sanitation. This is our livelihood. We do not want to get anyone sick. This includes ourselves, our families, or our clients. If people aren't ready to come out, by all means, stay home. If people don't feel safe, they don't need to go anywhere. They aren't comfortable, but don't punish all of us. Please allow us to open, support our families, and not go bankrupt. We have rent that is due and no money coming in. It's very difficult to make ends meet when we are operating at a loss every day. Small business owners will be out of money in a month according to the census. If this pandemic lasts six months, small business survival will be at fifteen percent. I speak for all my non-essentials. We, the people, did not sign up for perpetual shelter in place. Please use your power to stand up for us and allow to get back to work. Sincerely, Nicole Flores. Um, dear city council and, excuse me, elected officials, our way of life has been destroyed. Our rights have been trampled. Please allow all businesses to open their doors. This has to stop. Please stand up for our rights. Signed, Erica Mesa.
Hello, my name is Russell Thomas. I live in College Greens. I have had to work as an essential worker through this whole pandemic. I understand we need to practice social distancing and other safe practices, but what I need is a haircut. I can wash my own car and cook my own food. What I can't do is cut my own hair. I think it would be safer to have a professional cut my hair in a controlled environment than to force me to search out someone on the internet to cut it in someone's garage. Thank you, Russ Thomas. To our honorable leadership, if you need public comment to justify your duty to protect the Constitution of the United States of America, then you are not worthy of the position entrusted to you by the governed. Never in our history have we quarantined healthy citizens, but we agreed to this great experiment to flatten the curve and to learn the characteristics of COVID-19. There are no metrics to measure the destructive, the destruction to lives by this overreach of government. Those who say they are following the science while overlooking the obvious costs are fools. Civil unrest is growing because we now fear the tyranny of leadership more than the threat of the virus. Now is the time for all good people to come to the aid of their country. Revolt until we vote. Best regards, Nathan Leon from Los Banas.
To Mike Volalta and board members, my first thing is some businesses can't keep six feet apart from their clients. Those are the businesses that are considered high-risk. Those are the ones that need to stay closed a little longer. There is no way a hairstylist, esthetician, nail tech, massage therapist, or tattoo artist, gyms can work on their clients six feet apart, let alone some of those clients wearing a mask while face down in a face cradle, which is already hard enough to breathe in without a face mask. Some self-employed businesses just aren't safe enough to open up yet. Retail, obviously. You can social distance and wear masks. Other types of jobs you can't. Not to mention you are putting yourself and your clients at risk for those jobs where you can't social distance. I'm all for retail shops and stores opening up, allowing only certain amount of customers in at a time, sanitize, wear masks, et cetera. Others, you can't do that yet. The city needs to be smart when considering opening up certain businesses. Retail, I feel, is safe, but I do not feel safe working on my clients when I cannot be six feet apart from them and a safe procedure has not been implemented and can't be implemented, especially for massages. Several of my clients are high-risk. They wouldn't return yet for a while, even if I was open. So how would that even help my business? It is skin-to-skin contact. The cosmetology, massage, and tattoo businesses aren't ready yet. There are too many unknowns and we can't keep the safe distance apart. Please do not risk our safety by opening up these businesses too soon. Please listen to the governor on when stage three can be implemented. Our county is probably over two hundred infected now with six dead as of Friday. With just the criteria that Merced County mentioned at their last meeting earlier last week, we have already filled that criteria for opening further. Please take that into consideration when trying to open up these high-risk businesses. Like I said, all retail stores, I am all for because we can socially distance in those stores. Restaurants and fast food bars, I don't agree with either. I feel that it is high-risk still, especially bars. Get a few drinks into someone and they will not listen to the guidelines, even if they would before stepping into a bar. You can't wear mask while in a restaurant. So curbside pickup and delivery, I feel, is still necessary for those establishments. Thank you. Signed, Tracy Hawkins. Um, the next one is from Manuel Burrosby. I don't want Los Banas to open back up again because it's still not safe. I don't want to get sick and get my elderly parents sick. I don't want the elderly people who don't have anyone to take care of them sick. We took so many steps forward to just go backwards again. So much wasted time and money to keep the lockdown just to throw it all out the window because people want a haircut. Please don't open fully because it's still not safe. If Los Banas opens, please open safely and slowly. And here's the next one. Board members, if Merced County opens up against Governor Newsom's recommendation, what other procedures Merced County will put in place? Example, what will the death rate number be in order to go back and shut down Merced County? And will the shelter in place and masks still be in place if we open up Merced County? Are the hospital prepared if the number raised? Do they have enough supplies for the essential workers and ventilators? And is testing continuous during the opening of Merced County? My vote is to be a little more patient and follow the governor's recommendation. Kind regards, Mary Segura. Um, the next one is from Arlene Cardoza. Please reopen the city of Los Banas. There are too many small businesses suffering because of the lockdown order. The mom-and-pop businesses have always been the backbone of our community. As a lifelong citizen of this community, I am truly disappointed in the approach the city has taken and not reopening our town for commerce. The big box stores will re, will revive. The small businesses will not. Please allow small business to open immediately. We, the people, demand a lifting of the stay-at-home order immediately and the mandating of masks. Enough is enough. Um, here's the next one. Dear electeds, as a resident, I direct you to lift all orders restricting business. Statistics don't warrant the continuing damage inflicted upon our city and our, our county. Do not allow the governor's threats to withhold funding for not following his orders cause you to continue the economic slaughter of our businesses. Gavin Newsom hasn't, nor will he feel the impact of this shutdown unless he's recalled, not reelected. He's still out in public without a mask. His hair is coifed as it was when he campaigned. He's still getting paid. He's still employing people in his household. He's not sheltering in place. This city and county were founded by strong and courageous people who recognized risk as an element of life. You were elected and expected to serve the people. This so-called prevention of a virus with low fatality rates is wrecking havoc on all of us. Some will never recover. The U.S. Constitution recognized that certain universal rights cannot be taken away by legislation as they were beyond the control of a government, being naturally given to every individual at birth and that these rights are retained throughout life. We, the people, can make informed decisions on how to proceed and protect our lives and livelihood. You don't know what's best for me. As a resident, I direct you to lift all orders restricting business. Thank you for your service to our community. Geneva Brett, Los Banas. Um, the next one is from Alicia McLendon. Good afternoon, mayor and council. Let me start by saying I hope all is well and healthy. As for opening up the city, I feel that we need to protect our most vulnerable in this community. We all need to think of others, not just be self-absorbed. Yes, I do think some businesses should be opening back up with strict precautions, ones that can social distance and keep their store clean and sanitary. The issue here is who is going to make the, make sure these precautions will be followed. This whole time, we, we are, we're shelter in place. There was no one making sure the orders were being followed. The city went quiet. We looked to the police department and fire department for guidance due to those departments were the ones speaking up. Is there a plan if this virus goes wild, if things get out of control? There seems to be, there seems there was not much of one before. I guess what I am seeing is the decision that will be made has to be for the greater good and health of all the community, not just the ones who are crying. They want to, what they want. We all want something, but needs, safety, and health has to be the major concern. Thank you for reading and stay safe, a concerned citizen. Um, here's the next one. I am perplexed that parks are closed, but several tents are allowed at Pacheco Park. Not all tents are six feet apart. Are the people camping at the park tested for the coronavirus? How often are the bathrooms cleaned? Please tell me what is the city ordinance concerning camping in any city park? Signed, Fred Erickson. And the next one. Hello, I am retired and have lived here for nearly thirty years. I have respiratory issues that make me somewhat vulnerable to COVID-19. I will continue to be smart about where I go and wear a mask, more for others than me when I'm out and about. That being said, I believe that businesses can open as long as we continue be smart and safe in our choices. With appropriate precautions and procedures in place, some businesses will undoubtedly be cleaner and safer than the ones open currently. As we have already lost so many businesses to this pandemic, let's stop and allow those that still have a chance to be home again. Respectfully, Brad Chagnan. Dear City of Los Banas, I am writing you this letter to please consider reopening Los Banas. There are businesses that are having some majorly financial hardship. Give the Los Banas residents the opportunity to prove they can open and go by all safety guidelines. It is our constitutional right to work and provide for our family. Thank you, Jamie Lee. Um, this one. Hi, Alex. Just wanted to say great job on getting the numbers, getting the LB numbers to slow down. I'm supporting the use of mask as you decide when and how to reopen. And I'm attaching an article that is very clear on the different types and purposes of mask use. It supports your order and clearly illustrates the benefit of it. I'm assuming you have already seen it, but if not, please enjoy. If we could attain eighty percent use, it would really help us reopen while doing so safely. Thanks so much, Andrea Brandt. To whom it may concern, I'm writing to ask to please open town, especially Dance Explosion. I feel if we all follow social distancing and wear masks, we are safe. Signed, Farin. In the name of my daughter, Sophia, she is seven, we want to ask for the opening of a small business Dance Explosion. My daughter asked me this. Mom, the studio is a small place and cannot be more crowded than Walmart. So why the studio? It's closed. I feel with the precautions and social distancing in place, regulations and our common sense, we will be more than better in this beautiful town we call home. Please let small business to be open again. Thank you. Signed, Juana Perez. My daughter is graduating this year from high school, but she is not gonna have a graduation ceremony due to COVID. I feel if large businesses, Walmart or Target, where people get crowded and it's more easier to get infected or open, why are kids can't have their ceremony? They worked so hard to get here and crush their dreams like this. Just don't feel right. Please let our seniors have their ceremony. Signed, Juana Perez. Dear Los Banas City Council, I am Arturo Moreno, a resident of Los Banas, and I am writing this letter on behalf of my father, Antonio Moreno, of Illinois Avenue. My father recently decided he wanted to put up a carport in his driveway. So my father decided he needed to go down to the city and see if he needed a permit or something or another. And he was told that as long as he didn't receive complaints, that there would be no issue. My father then paid fifteen hundred to have a carport installed, only to receive a letter from code enforcement a week later telling him to take down his carport. My father argues that his cars will be damaged by the sunup and because he needs his carport to protect his property, we, we would this matter address and the ordinance regarding carports be revisited. Antonio can be reached and he gives his phone number and an email and his address. And this has nothing to do, it has to do with people who handle carports. Council members, this letter is a response to comments made during the May sixth city council meeting regarding CrossFit Valley View. And a letter dated May nineteenth, twenty twenty, from the U.S. Department of Justice to our governor Gavin Newsom, it was stated that there is no pandemic exception to the U.S. Constitution and its Bill of Rights. Further, the equal protection clause of the Fourteenth Amendment to the United States Constitution was designed to guarantee equal opportunities to citizens. Given this context, we have a question for the members of the city council. Do you believe equal opportunities exist within Los Banas during this pandemic? Based on the answer received at the May sixth city council meeting, that CrossFit Valley View must remain closed because it is in phase three of the reopening plan, we have to say that the answer to that question is no. There is no scientific or objective rationale for the continued closure of CrossFit Valley View, as has already been provided. Valley View, as has already been provided through the written social distancing and safety plan provided in the last letter to City Council. CrossFit Valley View can exceed the strictest objective safety requirements of our county health order. Despite that, CrossFit Valley View has been ordered to close while objectively less safe businesses are allowed to open. Holding businesses to different standards based on opinion instead of science, data, and objective measure is discriminatory and should have no place within our city. Sincerely Jennifer Correa and Gracianno Rubio, owners of CrossFit Valley View. To the City of Los Banas, Mayor and Council Members, with the good news from Governor Newsom and the Merced County Board of Supervisors that our county is approved to move into phase two point five, I urge you to remove the city's executive order and move Los Banas into this phase as well. It is time to allow our small businesses and restaurants to open and become and welcome back our patrons. Local business owners are owed and deserve the same rights as the big box establishments and that have continued to operate these past two months during the pandemic closure. Small businesses have a personal relationship with their customers. After all, they are friends and neighbors first, and thus we go above and beyond to ensure the safety and well-being of everyone entering. The future success of our city relies on the ability of our small businesses to open. It is time to open Los Banas for business. Sincerely Anne Sanchez. To whom it may concern, it's time for the city to open up business in our local area. We have been shut down long enough. As long as safety precautions are taking place, activities need to be opened up. Local dance studios should be opened. I feel precautions would be taken, and as a parent, if I felt it was not safe, I would not be writing this letter. School need to be back in session ASAP. Simple open dance studios and all other activities. Signed Monica Flores. To whom it may concern, I would like to plead with the powers that be to open our town. Myself and my children are suffering greatly due to this lockdown. I'm not afraid or even the slightest bit concerned about COVID-19. However, my children's mental health is suffering greatly. My daughter dances at Dance Explosion, and I truly believe the studio has more than enough room to implement distancing and still let our babies dance. I hope you will take this into consider. Signed Janay Chance. Good day. I have been a resident of Los Banas all my life. I have watched this town grow from a small town to a large town. Los Banas in the last few years has promoted shopping in town with downtown revitalization, and I am curious about why our city board, city manager, and mayor are willing to sit by and do nothing to help them. Los Banas has many small businesses that have been shut down for months, while all big box stores are open in Los Banas. I would assume there are anywhere from a hundred to a thousand people in them during any given time. Why is that okay, but it's not okay for a small business who has one to ten people in it during one given time be closed? In the name of safety. How is it acceptable you have closed the parks in our town to children and blocked the entrances and parking lots for us to park, yet allow the homeless to set up camps in our packs? Why is this board not standing up for the people of Los Banas in stating every business and church in this community are essential? Yes, we have those who are not ready to be out, and I applaud their right to stay home and continue to quarantine if they choose so. We will never be rid of COVID-19, but we have flattened the curve like you asked us to do, and it's time we move forward with life. Signed Lisa Souza. Good afternoon. I am a registered nurse and public health nurse. As a resident of Los Banas, I am deeply concerned by the recent approval for Merced County to move forward into phase two point five. A virus such as the coronavirus does not just disappear, we either develop a vaccine or reach herd immunity. When approximately seventy percent or more of the population becomes infected, we have not reached either of these milestones. Opening now is reckless and puts human life at risk. If we roll back protections and open Los Banas, we put some of our most vulnerable citizens at risk. Specifically, the elderly and those with life limiting and chronic diseases. I would like to ask the City Council to not only focus on the economic needs of this community, but to please consider this open too quickly. Thank you, Allison Aguilar. And I'm just checking my email. That's all I have.
All right. All right, so now, um, do we have any callers on the line? And should I identify them? Are there any callers on the line that would like to make a statement? Okay, not hearing any. I will go on to the next phase of this unless a council member has a comment. Any council members' comments? I'll go through the roll at this time, Mr. Freya. Mr. Free, any comment at this time? Mrs. Johnson Santos, any comment at this time?
Uh, not at this time, dear.
Thank you.
Freeya here, no comment. I was having a little technical problem.
Oh, okay, you're good. Mr. Jones? Any comment at this time?
Uh, Mayor, we have a, yeah, Mayor, well, we have a chance to comment after the, I don't remember, seven, the COVID-19 status update.
Oh, my God, yes. Uh-huh, after, after.
No comment at this time.
Okay, if you can comment now, anytime that you wish, um, I will be going through the, the, the roll of, of council members. Mrs. Lewis, do you have any comments this time?
None at this time.
Okay, and nor do I. So now, let's go to Becky and, uh, is it, is it Dr. Gonzalez? Is that whose name is on there?
Dr. Sandoval, can you hear me?
Sandoval, okay. All right, we can hear you now. Wonderful. Okay, uh, who, who would, go ahead with your presentation.
Okay, we're, we're gonna give an abbreviated version of the, uh, presentation that we gave yesterday at Board of Supervisors meeting. Um, Supervisor Silveira was there and made many comments, too.
Okay, just one moment, I'm trying to get it up.
The, the most current, uh, case count is, uh, two hundred and twenty-six. We've had, uh, about fifty-two, fifty-three, uh, more since the last presentation a week ago with the, with the supervisors. I wanted to make a point that even though, uh, we have capacity now to do more testing, the, the testing, uh, results that have turned positive and, and the ones that are more concerning to us are the fact that, uh, there are, they're being done by existing, uh, testing sites with, uh, community clinics and, and hospitals, and there's largely symptomatic patients. Of the ones that have been done by Optum Surf, uh, about seven hundred and thirty-three were negative, only nine positive out of those, and that's largely due to the fact that, uh, first responders, uh, were tested first and then a lot of asymptomatic people. But we wanted to point out that the, uh, cases that we've been finding have, have been spreading primarily through family clusters. Uh, we had six deaths, uh, at, uh, the number doubled, uh, since the presentation the week before. And next slide, slide four, slide four. Can you see that, uh, cases by city?
Uh, we, I cannot. Is there anyone else who can view anything on the screen?
Can you guys see it?
No.
Hold on, give me a second. Let me try to bring it back up. I don't know why it went away. Sorry about that.
Okay, thank you. No problem, thank you.
Okay, let me get us back to the rights.
There we go.
Is this the correct slide?
The next slide? Can, can you advance the slide? I can't get that one. Okay, uh, the, um, the red, uh, line is, uh, Los Baños and the, the gray line is, uh, Merced. And initially, uh, Los Baños had a, a significant, uh, deep rise compared to Merced. And, uh, this was felt to be due to, uh, the shelter in place that was done by the state, and then also, uh, Los Baños, uh, city official, um, made the restrictions in terms of, uh, business in, and, and also, uh, sheltering in, in the city. Uh, the curve, uh, and flattened, uh, and now it's been surpassed by the, uh, Merced, uh, curve. And next, uh, slide? Okay. This is information on the deaths that we've had in, in, um, in the county. Uh, the, the ages have raised, ranged from fifty to sixty-five to over sixty-five age groups. And, uh, although the majority had some chronic disease, uh, that made them more predisposed, there was, there was at least one that was just from a family, traveling to a family wedding out of jurisdiction and, uh, and, and died there. Next slide? Okay. Um, there have been an average of eight cases, uh, in the hospital, uh, in the last census, and the average stays have been eight and a half days. Uh, the COVID cases tend to be in the hospital longer. Uh, next slide? Patients with prolonged ICU stays, uh, four individuals in the ICU for over two weeks. Uh, one, uh, under thirty-five, intubated for twenty-two days and has, uh, had to have placement of tubes, tracheostomy tube and feeding tube, but is doing much better. And then the others, uh, intubated for less, less amount of time, but still intubated. And two of the four people that are in the intensive care are family members. The next slide? Okay, this slide is, the reason for this slide is to show the, um, importance of opening safely. Uh, preventing spicing cases or hospitalizations that might overwhelm the hospital and also to, uh, to try to prevent death. Uh, the importance of, uh, no mask gatherings is, uh, continues to be highlighted, and then safety protocols for businesses as they open and the use of masks. Now, the, the yellow, um, is, uh, if people do not wear masks, uh, like, uh, extreme lower left, and, and an example of that would be, um, I think recently in, in Save Mart parking lot of Atwater, they had, uh, a, a large gathering, uh, unmasked, and that would be one, one extreme where, uh, there's a high risk. And, uh, you can see the number on the right that the two is, uh, reflective of that. So one is that if we are able to get the virus down to reproduction of less than one, and, uh, if it's two, it, uh, it doubles astronomically when two, four, multiplying up to, uh, to, uh, thousands, uh, over a matter of, of days, even before people start to become symptomatic. The extreme, um, blue is the right upper, uh, corner, that would be an example of where people who use masks, uh, and distancing, uh, to an extreme that we have not done in the United States. And that's, uh, examples of that are like Hong Kong and, um, Taiwan, uh, countries like that where they, they are more accustomed to wearing masks. And, uh, I'll point out that Taiwan did not even have to, uh, shut down its, its economy because they were able to institute, uh, measures to isolate and quarantine and prevent the transmission of the virus so that it, uh, fell to less than one and then less than that, uh, to where, where all those people were quarantined. I'll stop there and I'll let, uh, Dr. Nanjunjo, uh, talk now.
So I will be going through this relatively quick if we could forward by two slides, please. Move forward by two. So attestation, um, when we presented this yesterday, we had just submitted our application. I'm pleased to report to this City Council that we have received approval to move forward into stage two B as a county, and, um, the review criteria is there. Where we didn't meet measures last time the submission or the documents had been submitted was with epidemiologic stability. Um, if we could go to the next slide, please. So the updated epidemiologic criteria, um, the former criteria included one per ten thousand cases within the previous fourteen days. Based on the population size of Merced County, that would have given us probably, uh, well, not probably, definitively, a cumulative case rate of twenty-eight cases in that fourteen day window. Um, and Merced County was at two point three per ten thousand. Nowhere it, during this outbreak or this incident, have we seen, um, a case count or, uh, case rate of one per ten thousand, and that was very stringent and meant only a handful of counties would actually meet the criteria. On May eighteenth, twenty twenty, we participated in a phone call with the state where they, um, revealed revised criteria which were less stringent, and it was also based on statewide data as well. And the new criteria you'll see in those boxes was the, uh, fourteen day cumulative case rate, but instead of it being one per ten thousand, they increased it to two point five per ten thousand or twenty-five per one hundred thousand population. At the case count that we're currently at, that was not met. Um, we're starting to see an increase in the amount of cases, um, that are coming through our system. However, um, there was a second criteria in that first requirement of have, either having that case rate or having a positive test rate, um, testing rate of less than eight percent of all your test performed countywide, we as the county stand at around five percent. So we met that, and then the second criteria was the percent change in hospitalization day over day, um, being at less than five percent or less than twenty hospitalized patients in a day. Though both of those criteria were met as well. So we submitted our, uh, requirements, our attestation with Dr. Sandoval's signature, and shortly thereafter, we're notified that we had been approved. Um, next slide, please. One of the requirements that were listed a couple of slides ago with respect to consideration for attestation includes testing. Assemblymember Adam Gray and several other members at the state were able to secure a second site location, which was planned on being stood up in the city of Los Banas, and unfortunately, we're told, uh, not so long ago that that state site has now been removed. Next site, or, and we, we do not have, um, any, um, alternate plan as they stand now, but we are reviewing, especially as we move beyond two B or further immersed in it, we'll have more time to identify how it is that we could see. have more time to identify how it is that we could see potential for increasing some of the capacity, um, on the west side of the county. But right now, don't have the bandwidth, especially as we start to demobilize. Next slide, please. Next slide? One more, please?
I'm not sure why it's not moving. There we go.
Uh, one, board, one more slide, please? Oh, thank you. So, um, there are, and there have been very many demonstrations throughout the state of, uh, what takes place when the county is misaligned with the state's requirements. I know we've said it many times before when we're up on the podium, but we'll definitely reiterate during this city council meeting that the requirements that have been put out to the counties are a mirror of what the state requires. The regional health officer order required that the counties comply with the state health order and issue their own because California is a decentralized state. And so it's not connected like you would find in Ohio or Florida where there are townships, but everything actually goes through, um, the state. So the directive was provided to us in March that we were to have our own health officer order, but you'll see that it's almost a line for line, um, well, ma- majority equivalent with what the state has put in place. Um, for those counties that want to go beyond the steps that have been approved at the state level, um, and we are now one of those examples, they come down relatively hard. Um, the test site, while others were also advised that they weren't receiving a test site, there were alternatives, alternatives, and alternative was not provided to us. Um, and then, uh, initially, we had been advised that we were not going to be receiving remdesivir, which is one of the therapeutic medications that has been known to scientifically improve symptoms and increase the likelihood of, um, uh, reduce the likelihood of mortality for those who are hospitalized with COVID-nineteen. We've since been advised on the heels of our discussion yesterday that we will be receiving small allotments from the state. Internally, following the lead of our countywide Office of Emergency Services, public health will begin demobilizing our departmental operations center, not in any way to suggest that COVID-nineteen is done. However, we have been in this now for almost a four-month period. People are very, very tired. I myself am very tired. And we need to start sending the resources that were so generously lent to us from other departments back home. Next slide, please. So this is a pictorial of the different stages, um, within Merced County. And we already, um, but when it was at its most stringent or strict require, strictest requirement was stage one, which we've moved beyond. Stage two A with, so stage two has been divided into two, um, different stages, so two A, two B, or two-point-oh, two-point-five, whichever you'd refer to it as. Um, that initial beginning part of stage two, we moved through as a state. So all fifty-eight local jurisdictions on Friday, which I forget the date, all moved and progressed to stage two. The point of having added station was to allow us to expedite movement through stage two as we prepared to move into stage three. We have received an abundance of questions and did hear through the public comment that some individuals also stated their confusion about what is permitted and what's not. And we're sensitive to that and feel that there is a responsibility that we have here in public health to offer or issue clarity, which we will be doing on the heels of this phone call, trying to release some information through media outlets. So not just business owners or proprietors or, um, people investing in businesses, but the community as a whole receives the same information and they also are able to make infor- informed decisions. We've heard a lot about flattening the curve. Um, the curve has only been around in this county for the last two and a half month period. We can't definitively state that we have flattened the curve. We still have fall, um, that we are anticipating, especially the fall and winter season. And our biggest concern is that the spike has just been delayed already out of China, which I know people hate to bring up examples of countries outside of the United States, but viruses and, and those things don't care, you know? And so we look to see what's taking place so we can be prepared. I'm at the nation and as a state and as a county, they're already starting to see second waves for, um, countries that are experiencing their second peak. And they're seeing that the results are more debilitating, especially out of China for those small number of patients that have been represented with, have represented with illness or presented with illness during the second wave that they're starting to experience. And they're seeing there be more debilitating effects and they're trying to evaluate whether there's been a change in the virus. So we are hoping that we have flattened the curve and delayed the inevitable, um, but we will not know until we get through these upcoming two seasons. And so, um, one thing I did want to emphasize is that as a, uh, city, I would, really would like to commend Los Banos. You took early stages to some quickly, you took, you mobilized very quickly as is evidenced by the case counts that we see when we compare city against city. And so, um, just wanted to say that, you know, thank you for being able or having, uh, the foresight to align what your practices are with the practices that we're trying to implement countywide, just to safeguard and, and be sure that we're safeguarding families, friends, loved ones, relatives, um, from this disease. So without further delay, um, I'm going to turn it back over to Dr. Sandoval and then for a moment, we'll entertain a couple of questions, but we don't have a whole lot of time because we're running up against, um, an, an internal deadline, but I'll turn it over to Dr. Sandoval.
I just wanted to add, uh, comments to, to put things in perspective. Um, I initially, uh, before this, uh, second attestation, uh, the, the, there were eleven counties that were, uh, approved because they had low, uh, incidence of, uh, COVID. And they were felt to be, uh, safe to, uh, to, to proceed forward without the restrictive measures that, uh, that were seen elsewhere. Uh, and these counties tended to be sparsely populated in, in northern, uh, California, uh, and, and they had no difficulty with their attestation. The, uh, the others are, include Merced County. Uh, and these are, well, if you, if you look at the ones that are approved, you can call them green so they have the green light to go ahead. The yellow is means caution and that's where we are. And then there's a red section that's basically, uh, shelter in place. Uh, and this includes some of the, uh, uh, Southern California in particular, uh, counties that, uh, that don't have the, um, that have very high case counts still. In our, uh, attestation, we were allowed to proceed forward with close, uh, monitoring in terms of testing and contact tracing. And the intent from the state is to, uh, allow us to move forward, uh, conditionally as, uh, but if we start seeing a, a huge spike in cases, that might mean that we have to roll back. Uh, the governor calls this the light switch or dimmer switch. And, uh, that's, that's the, um, explanation I wanted to give to the situation that we, we, we have in Merced County, that we have the tentative, go ahead. And we, uh, my social message would be that we can't just a- assume things are back to normal. If we don't do the social distancing, the, uh, um, I, I encourage masking, uh, use in, indoors, like people go into grocery store to spend as, as little time as possible. And the masks actually protect both the, uh, user and the people around the user. Uh, and, uh, we, we should look at it that way, that we're in a difficult situation, but we want to make the best of it. You don't need to use a mask outdoors unless you're in close proximity to other people. You don't need to use a mask in your car if you and the, uh, others, uh, are people from your household. But, uh, the, the use of a mask is when we have particularly indoor, uh, where the, the virus can be transmitted just simply by, uh, the force of talking and, uh, re- re-breathing that air over time. Because that's the thing, the viral load, uh, and time determine the, the condition. And, and then also people's, uh, immunity is lower. I'll stop there.
So that concludes our presentation and we'll turn it back over to your city council.
Okay, thank you. City council, um, I'm going to, uh, go through the list here and then I can go through it again if you have questions. Mr. Friar, do you have any questions at this time?
No questions. Thank you for the excellent presentation.
Mrs. Santos?
Uh, yes, I do have a few questions. Um, first, just briefly, I try to go through these. Um, first is, how, how long do you estimate? I mean, I, I know what you said, that there, there is a caution of, um, if we were to open, there would be, um, we get larger number of cases. But how long do you expect to see the next phase of just phase three where we would see some of the other places opening?
We, the state has only given us an indication that they're working on developing that plan. Um, we can't commit because we don't know. And every time we guesstimate, if it's wrong, then we hear all types of commentary. So honestly, we don't know.
I gotcha. So on, when we, uh, essentially, I guess when the county feels that we are ready for phase three, we would, um, essentially go back to the state and try to, um, see if that next phase is, is ready, is, is okay for us. Is that correct?
Actually, the state usually advises us on when they open it up for counties to submit any paperwork if there's a possibility of accelerating it. So for stage two, they dictate about for us. Two B was, uh, as Dr. Sandoval alluded to earlier, was if you meet certain criteria, then you can go further ahead than most of the state. Um, but for stage three, they were very clear. You cannot progress to stage three until we tell you you can.
Okay. And one last question, if you don't mind. Um, as for, um, masks, um, it's of course been said all over that our, our mask policy is more stringent than other cities. Um, are you noticing a difference between our city and other cities as to how, I mean, I did definitely see the presentation, but are you noticing from our city to other cities that there is, uh, a big difference as to how cases are coming to you and, and whatnot?
Um, I, I, can you repeat it just, uh, one more time?
Yes, of course. Sorry about that. Um, I've been told that our mask policy, um, is a little more stringent than other stores and than other cities. So I was wondering if you had seen a, um, a, a difference, a major difference in, um, like the cases in other cities versus the cases in ours?
Um, not, not really aware of differences. Um, I don't think anyone particularly looked at it in terms of which city is using it more than other cities. I, I really can't answer your question.
Okay. All right. Well, I, I do appreciate it and thank you very much for your presentation. Thank you, mayor. I'm, I'm done with questions as of, for right now.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Jones?
Yeah, I got a question. Um, you know, it, if the county has, uh, attributed our executive order for wearing the mask being the reason why our cases are low in Los Banos, why isn't the county adopting a similar order? They're actually less restrictive. So is there any reasoning on that? If these masks actually work, why isn't the county following suit since they're giving us our numbers?
The, the, uh, cities can, are allowed to be more stringent than the county and the county is allowed to be more stringent than the state, but not the other way around. Um, I think the, the mask is may, may have something to do with some of the dampening of your curve, uh, but it's, it's very hard to prove that that alone was the only factor.
And we have, just in spirit of disclosure, we have attempted to brief that. We would not be the only county who's had difficulty in putting, uh, an order out there to mandate use of masks. And however, that being said, they are highly recommended, but in terms of their use, that, that we're leaving at the business level, um, to, because no shoes, no shirt, no service, whatever it is that they want as far as criteria, um, you know, from a, an owner perspective, we absolutely encourage them to adopt. And we're actually encouraging cities to adopt stricter criteria where they so choose. Um, believe it or not, so some have been upset with how strict the criteria has been. So you're a bit of a red herring. So we're trying to balance everybody's needs in the best interest of public health.
Okay. Got another question for you guys. In your professional opinion, uh, according to our governor, it is safer for us to go to Walmart, Target and Home Depot, but our little stores downtown, it's not safe. It's not safe for us to go get our haircut, but we can go to the chiropractor. Can you guys put some logic on that one?
It's, uh, the, there is, the whole reason for moving on to, uh, two B and for our efforts to, to do that is basically that, there's not, uh, there's no inherent, uh, difference. If, if you're going to a Walmart or, or Costco, like, large box store that's crowded, you're, you're in danger. If, if you can keep the, uh, the social distancing for a small business, I think it's, it's perfectly safe to open it just com- uh, compared to, uh, large box store. I think one of the, the concerns about the, uh, the way it was initially rolled out in terms of essential, non-essential was that some of these large, large box stores like Costco or Target maybe have food. So they, they were, that was part of the reason that they were allowed to open, whereas they like a florist shop, but that's all the only thing they did was not. So I think moving forward to two B, uh, helps to, to bring in the safe that, uh, the, the safer, uh, that would, would be considered, uh, non-essential, uh, into the same protection as a large box store.
And I would, uh, just to add to that, I, I apologize. For the chiropractic, um, requirements, that there are significant medical needs that people have, um, for those who have experienced any type of, um, debilitating illness or disease that need to, um, be seen or receive the, uh, the required services to make them better, that is deemed as required and necessary. And, and we've even seen throughout this where dental services and non-essential or non-emergent, um, surgeries have been delayed. Well, the more and more you do that, the, the greater the need there becomes. And so the state actually has been working out how it is that they want to, to roll things back into, um, being open versus not opened. And we totally understand the, how people, um, how it falls to here, essential versus non-essential. That was not our terminology. That was terminology that was selected at the state. We wish they, they sit on risk versus non-risk or higher risk versus lower risk. That unfortunately is not what they did. Or essential goods versus, um, you know, non-required goods. But that did not take place for whatever reason. And so because we borrow from the state's language, it is not in any way to, uh, demoralize or to reduce anybody's role, um, throughout the county. So I hope that answers your question.
Yeah, I just, well, it just seems to me that the state doesn't really have it quite figured out. I mean, when in, um, phase one, liquor store can be open, but a furniture store has to remain closed. So they say furniture is not essential. Well, if you got a pregnant wife at home and her needs are changing, maybe she needs a firmer mattress for the bed, that seems pretty essential. So it just seems like a lot of this is just being pulled out thin air. I don't think anybody really has the answers, but I think a lot of this is just hurting us more than anything by having all these restrictions in place. So personally, I'd like to see everything opened up.
Um, well, as a county, we, we are going to where they allow for us to go. Um, but we definitely agree. It's, I mean, when we're talking about outbreaks, they usually are, you know, several hundred, three, four hundred. You haven't heard of the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention of CDC playing a large role in this? That's completely unheard of. So we're in unusual times overall, just comprehensively. And we're just trying to navigate as best we can while protecting our county.
And circling back around to like the large gatherings, I mean, gosh, at any one given time, you can have a couple hundred people on Walmarts, especially in a super Walmart. Haven't heard of any large outbreaks there. And let's just face it, yeah, you can social distance, you can wear your mask, but look at all the products and all the shelves and all the doors, refrigerators that are touched, keypads on your credit card terminals, all those items. I just firm believer that if there was going to be an outbreak, you know, if they say if it's going to be where the masses are, it's going to be in those places, not at small churches, not at hair salons, not in tattoo parlors or anything else that has a low number of occupants in it. So.
Understood, registered.
That it, Mr. Jones?
Uh, that's it for right now.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Mrs. Lewis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I lost my screen there for a moment and, uh, by the time I came back on, I, I think the question had been passed by. But what I saw at the beginning was there was testing to be proposed in Los Banos, uh, but the governor pulled it. My question is, why was it pulled? Why was Los Banos, uh, in the position of having testing done and the governor pulled it? What caused that pull to happen?
You want to take that one first? You want to take that one first, Becky, because it's yesterday?
Um, sure. So the testing was pulled, and I I I will be very upfront, I'm not trying to put leave egg on anybody's face. That's not my role. I'm the public health director. I am not a politician. I just have to deal in political situation. There were some things that were done throughout the county, um, which gave pause to people who were in positions of decision-making to say, well, you know, if Merced County wants to go in a different direction from the state, then perhaps that this is not the direction that we need to go. And, you know, whatever side people may be on, and it's absolutely no fault of Los Banos. Um, it wasn't you just happened to be the variable in the equation that was impacted by some of that taking place. So that's about as comfortable as I am um saying that there were external issues that led to this decision, which not only affected Los Banos, but also affected um public health as well. And I will turn it back over to the mayor.
Ms. Lewis, if I might, I can add to that as of last night.
Please do.
Adam Gray called me along with the governor's uh assistant. Uh, I'm not sure of the proper title of the of one of the governor's assistants. And and I mentioned that to them. And what they told me was uh the um uh the fact that we didn't need a testing site. And uh there are other places that needed it, and so they pulled it and uh and sent it someplace else. But the question that begged an answer is that why did they approve it to begin with? And then pulled it away? So I I thank Becky for frankness, and I and I've made a friend in her, and I wanted to thank her again. But but I'm getting two completely different answers when I uh when I talked to Adam Gray and the governor's assistant last night. And believe me, I'm not happy about this. I don't like playing politics, and I think that's what happened. Thank you.
Well, certainly, it's it's very evident to me, just based on these clandestine answers that I've gotten, that it is about politics. It's not about people. And the governor gets on the television every day and reports about all these uh testing sites that are being open, especially in rural areas. And it angers me uh to hear that and then to know that we were scheduled for a testing site, and then for some reason, he arbitrarily made a decision based on whatever, whether it was political, whether he was angry, or whatever the case may be, to pull that site from Los Banos. Um, that I that doesn't settle well with me at all. And and I think it's an injustice for our community, and um there there's not a whole lot that we can do about it because he's holding the first strings on this. So that's my comment on that one. And in regards to um uh the medical directors for our health department, um, it's it's to me, it's very obvious. Um, and at at our last meeting that we had, we had uh our medical director for our local hospital here uh show us a graph that wa- uh once the city passed the ordinance for masks to be worn, that the curb in Los the curb in Los Banos started to decline. So I I don't know why the county can't see that. It it's very obvious. And that should, you know, to make a vague statement that uh we can't determine why your curb went down is ludicrous to me, and I'm upset about that, too. So those are my two statements. I'm not a politician. I'm an elected person trying to do the best that I can for the people that I represent in the city of Los Banos. I didn't I didn't run to be a politician. I ran to try to do something for the people that live here. And um this, you know, if you're hearing my anger right now, I I hope you're hearing it clearly. And that's all I have to say, Mr. Mayor, on that one for now.
If I may respond, um, we did not attend the council meeting. So yes, it's not clear to us because we work at the county level, not at each individual city level. So if there's information the city would like to share with us, maybe we'd be able to review it. But you have your responsibility to your city, we have our responsibility to the county, and it includes more than just Los Banos and more than the city of Merced. So if if we were not um involved in that, there was we're not skirting or skirting past why there was a fall, we aren't aware of that because we're looking at it from a county-wide perspective. So that's all that's all I have to respond to that with.
And with that, Mr. Mayor, I would like to say that the county has statistics for each city, whether it's unincorporated or whether it's a city with, you know, that has uh um whether it's unincorporated or not, excuse me. So those statistics are coming in to you, and to be able to disseminate them the way that you do and to to declare that you you're just working for the county. Well, when I see those stats coming in uh each night on the reports that we get as uh an unincorporated area or a city has five or more cases, then they end up being on the list. So I I find that hard to believe as well, that um you're just representing the county. The county represents every city that's in the county, whether it's a city or an un- unincorporated area. So that that I don't buy either. And and we can disagree without being disagreeable. I'm just expressing my position as far as what you report and how you declare it and how you're making a disclaimer to say that what we've done here in Los Banos, um, you 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 don't want to make a disclaimer remark on remark on that. So I see I see the graph, and, you know, it makes my eyes bleed, no matter what you say or what you think or how you present it to us. I see the graph. And I think the question that Mrs. Santos was trying to get to you was, do you see the difference in other cities and unincorporated areas where there is a suggestion of wearing a mask versus Los Banos, where we have uh made it an order in Los Banos for people to wear a mask to protect our community and protect our public? And we have social distancing orders in our city to protect our citizens and to protect the residents going especially into the large big-box stores and the large grocery stores. It's evident that it's working. So I, you know, again, we're part of the county of Merced, so I would hope that you would have had an opinion on that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Um, again, getting back to the testing, I did bring up with uh uh Assemblymember Gray and the governor's assistant that we are kind of the incubator for the uh Bay Area, that we have ten thousand two hundred and so many people that commute every day to our Bay Area or out of Los Banos, and also the thirty-five thousand cars that pass through. And I told them I could not understand why with 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 those kinds of statistics and the testing that needed to go on in this community, why they canceled it. And uh so the next thing that they cited cited was that uh uh we're uh we're now uh uh being taken care of by the testing center in Merced. So uh it just just be aware and put all these comments in your back pocket, uh because, yeah, it was political. So Becky, here's my question. Uh, yesterday, and and I'm sure all the council members have have uh received this ire that uh people, and you've listened to the comments, they want us to open up the city. So I think everyone thinks that the 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 council is keeping Los Banos closed. So yesterday at the council meeting or at the supervisors' meeting, I I hear these comments, we are not in the business of picking winners and losers. If you move beyond two point five, you may experience problems with the state. If businesses go beyond two point five and open up, they are on their own. And those were at least comments from the supervisors and and people in the audience. And then you've got other cities who said that they're not going to enforce uh code enforcement. And but they said if you if you have a problem with the state, basically, don't come crying to us because we didn't give you permission to open up. We just said that that what we're going to do is we are going to uh 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 not send code enforcement out. And so then I hear comments, we have to open up in a safe way, not just opening up without proper safety measures. So where is the county with this? And and I know what I've heard at at the supervisors' meeting, and I think it was that uh if they're gonna open up, they're gonna open up.
Yeah, so where um at last discussion yesterday, they said that they would open up to what was permitted. Uh, they ended up a five-zero vote on opening up to stage two B or two point five, whichever you refer to it as. And so um that was where the agreement was made um for the county. Now, I I am aware that some cities have elected to go in different directions. As much as we've tried to stay aligned, we we just do the best that we can. And so as a county, though, however, we are moving to uh level two point five or or, you know, to be part of this. Um, for those businesses that rely on licensure outside of the normal permitting process provided through environmental help, we have been made aware that there are others who um or there are other organizations that are coming down in areas, and that doesn't necessarily mean Merced, but going to other locations and areas for people who are going against the state requirements, so they're util- utilizing other outlets, to pull those permits or to pull those licenses, um, because those all sit under the state's umbrella. And so while we are aware of um ABC and um some other organizations who are involved, like the cosmetology licensure, that we don't we do not get involved with because they don't confer with us. We hear about it after it's taking place in other counties. And that's what we want business owners to be careful, um, because that's not anything we can control or um be able to um reach back out to the state on. And those situations can end up resulting in pulled liquor licenses for months. Um, and who knows what the direction the state goes in that? So that's what we've been made aware of, and we wanted to make sure that we shared it. And we also have, as a county, a lot of our fu- all of our funding essentially comes through the state, and we don't want to be in a position where our funding is jeopardized, especially on the heels of this incident, which has been thousands, tens of thousands of hours in uh public health alone and several hundred thousand dollars and not being able to tap into that as a reimbursement. So it's not everything we know, it's everything that could potentially be a problem if we go against the requirement or if we go against the health officer, the state health officer order.
Right. I just didn't hear any concrete enforcement from the county either. And uh and it's basically if you open up, basically like what the county said, it's your own risk.
That's correct. And I'm not entirely sure where we stand on that. Um, there have been different positions taken. I know there that we have law enforcement partners, but they their partnership with us um has not necessarily included this portion of it. Um, just based on differences in terms of how the governor is issuing the order. Um, but I'm not sure what's taking place at the local levels. I know that they're all partnered with one another. We have been in contact with our code enforcement team. We do have administrative orders, but we want this to be a partnership. We don't want to impugn people who are already being impugned because they haven't been open for ten or eleven weeks. And so what we, I can say as the health department, are doing, are relying on education and hopefully social um social accountability, making a very clear what the requirements are and the non-pharmaceutical intervention, so there could just be a level of holding accountable because we don't have the resources. We have environmental health, but I'm not sure beyond what we're doing, what the county as a whole, the direction it's going to go in. The good thing is that at level two point five, there are significant places that are much more open than before. And my hope is that for those places that pose the most significant risk, they remain closed because, you know, that is where our largest risk is. I guess time has to tell. And I know that's not the answer you want to hear, but that's that's honest truth.
No, it's 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 part of what I heard yesterday, and I didn't hear any any strong opposition to uh and the comments that I read uh are are comments throughout the county. And uh and no city has given approval through a five-member vote of the city council to say that, yeah, it's okay to do whatever you want. It's open at your own risk. And uh if you're beyond two point five and you want to open a business that that that's uh that's not covered in what the current health order is. Is that pretty much a fair statement?
That is a that is a very fair statement. I think it's a very well-stated statement.
Okay. Thank you. I, you know, because because, you know, our council members have and including my uh I have uh have received some ire, like like we're keeping the the place closed. And uh and so I just want to be perfectly clear on uh on on how this works. And it's it's basically uh with everyone that that I've spoken to and listened to all the comments, and I've listened to hours and hours of video and uh and meetings, and 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 this is what I've come up with. Uh, you know, the the cities are not giving approval because uh in in my estimation, uh, we give an approval, and someone loses their license, they come back and they say, well, the city of Los Banos gave me approval, and I got my license taken away, it's your fault. So uh, you know, and there are other other specific things that could come up. So uh these are uh are are is information that I thought I should get out there tonight for everyone to hear. And uh most of the information that I have, it came from insurance agents who have told me that uh that basically with the liability insurance that businesses have, uh, they need to check to see if they do something outside of the current health order, the approved attestation of two point five, will their policies cover them? And uh and believe me, it it's a scary situation uh to to balance uh the need to make money as to the health or the the liability insurance you're paying, and if that liability insurance is any good, um, based on the activity that you perform, if you're not authorized to do it.
That is correct, and and we've heard the same here, and and that's why I I did want to yesterday during the board meeting, at the county board meeting, emphasize that, you know, because there is a lot of confusion. So I I guess I'll leave it at that. I'm glad you're clarifying at the city council meeting what the permissions are and what they're not, because that has been very unclear throughout the county, and that has become very evident to us here.
Well, I'll tell you, I I feel I made a friend in you, and and I'm uh I'm very appreciative of uh of the way you've uh been so honest with us. And and so if if we can help in any way, uh, you you know, in the future, uh, the city manager and I and the city council were were are 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 here to uh assist you. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you all. And we're going to be logging off because we have to finish uh this clarity document for two point five that we're going to publish soon here. So unless there are any last questions, we're going to be logging off.
All right, council. Uh, Mr. Faria, any last questions?
No.
Mrs. Santos?
Uh, no, no further questions for them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Mr. Jones?
Uh, no, no further questions.
Mrs. Lewis?
No further questions.
Okay. And I don't have any other questions. Okay, thank you. Thank you both.
Thank you. Take care. Bye-bye.
Okay. Okay, council. Um, uh, Alex, anything to report? Anyone from uh um uh city staff to report anything? Alex, anything to add?
Not nothing really to add at this point. Uh, we we are available, am available for questions, um, and looking forward to the to see hearing what other council discussion there is, and if there is additional direction from the council, um, we'd be uh interested in hearing that uh this evening.
Thank you. Council, uh, this is your time. You've heard all this information, and uh you've heard uh everything that everyone has said and uh the letters that have been uh written um as to where do we go? And we're at two point five right now. Uh, the city's going to be rolling out some information uh to help uh businesses that uh can open within that. But uh, you know, it begs the question, uh, what else are you in favor of? And that's the first part of it. The second part is, uh, do we want to bring back the mask order, uh, either at a special meeting or a um a meeting in two weeks, uh, to discuss it, to see where we're at, to see if we're gonna continue it or uh or uh or then uh uh roll it back? So the first thing I think we should deal with is, uh, let's talk about the current health order of two point five. So what are your feelings on that, council?
Mayor, Mr. Faria, uh, I recommend we allow our businesses to open up to the level of two point five. Uh, I do agree with keeping the social distancing and masks. Uh I do agree with keeping the social distancing and masks uh in place for now until we see how this works.
Um are you in favor, Mr. Freya, of of uh of uh of I I don't even want to ask this question, but but you know, there, what about with businesses that may want to open? Uh uh and you can't give this permission, but uh but people that that may want to uh not abide by the health order?
Um which health order are you referring to, two point five?
Two point five, sir, yes.
Um we we can't go past two point five uh because we would be in violation. Um I know cosmetologists uh received an email that said if they go, if they try to open, they're gonna lose their license possibly for life. Um and so, you know, we don't have the authority to 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 clear something like that, because the state controls them. Um but whatever, I think the county will allow us to open, and whatever the state will allow us to open, I'd like to see us open and continue the recommendation of safety. Um so that business, we take care of both the health of our citizens and start energizing, re-energizing the health of our economy.
Thank you for that very eloquent statement. Uh anyone else?
I have a comment if I'm next in line.
Yes, go ahead.
You can go, enough to you. I I don't know, you'd like me to go first, ma'am?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Um I'm gonna be completely honest. Um I would personally like to see us be perhaps at a phase three. Um uh I would like to see that our businesses, because I I completely sympathize with some of our s- our smaller businesses. I will not use the word nonessential, like she, like Becky from the county said as well, that, you know, that was just a freezing of of the of the state, because all businesses are essential. I think all of us agree on that, whether open or closed, I we think we completely agree on that. Um I I know that if we were are to follow the county's, excuse me, stay with the c- within the county's uh allotment of two point five, um we we definitely, you know, I mean, we're already in an issue, we're already having issues right now with the smaller businesses being closed for so long. It's been like ten weeks now. So I mean, honestly, I'd like to see us there, and of course, set the discretion of the council, I'm not deciding for anyone. But I want the people to know out there that we, everything, every single decision we have made is for the health of everyone. We have not sit here, tried to be jailers to state that uh you have to do this because the city stays so and just lay down our large gavel. We have done everything and everything in in the favor of the people, hoping to help help the people of this city. Um I'll I'll I can say is that, I mean, I would personally, um if we, if it's at the decision of of the council that we are to definitely stick with with the county and state guidelines, I would like to see us give it, I mean, honestly, I exactly two weeks to see how thing, how the curve, how our curve is looking with this us being in the phase two point five, and see if we can automatically slip into phase three. Um I personally, I um I know, I mean, if our curve goes higher, I mean, I definitely understand, I would have to eat those words, but for the smaller businesses that are hurting, and I mean, there are some very valid questions out there, um I would like to see some relief to some of those businesses out there. So that is just where I'm at with it. I do apologize for the fumbling of my words, but um and I think uh Mayor, I don't know if we're gonna be bringing this up at a later time, but perhaps um thinking about leaving or repealing masks back to the business level. If the biz- that so business chooses to keep their masks, have their signage, their post, their signage up as to keep their mask on when their um when um their patrons come in, I I would like to see if we could talk about that, or if that's something we're gonna be talking about at a later time. So I'm gonna be honest, I might have some more questions for later, but that's currently where I'm sitting. So thank you, ma'am.
And we're not giving, uh so let me be perfectly clear. None of the other cities have been uh approval. They've just said that their code enforcement is uh is basically, or or they're not going to interfere with the opening. And if someone opens up, they open up at their own risk. And and this is, this is where where it's so dangerous. And 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 I think what what city staff is looking for is a conglomeration of comments to say, they don't want to find anyone. Uh that's always, our ours has always been educational enforcement and and trying to get people to do the right things. So what we're basically doing is, we're giving our city staff the direction that we think we should give them, uh you know, based on the uh the most competent knowledge that the five of us have. And 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 yes, uh uh i- if you if people go beyond this, then they're subject to uh any licensure or or any um uh, how do I put this? Any any type of uh of uh, oh God, I I can't think of the name of it, uh nonprofit status. Um uh and and so, you know, all these things, that anything that's governed by the state could be taken away if they go beyond the health order of two point five. And so, I mean, I I I think our our staff is looking for some kind of direction. So let's go on to the next person, then we can talk some more. Who else? Brett, are you next?
Yes, um you know, I gotta be honest, I don't care what our governor says, all businesses are essential. I I'm definitely in favor of opening all businesses, but they're gonna have to open up their own discretion because ultimately, they their licenses are on the line. So uh I I'm not in favor of sending police out to cite them or anything like that. I'm sure we have a lot better things to do than worry about if a like business, like a hair salon, wants to open up. Um you know, I I I don't have a problem with that at all. Um you know, I'd like to even see the churches open up, uh they can social distance. Uh like going back to Walmart is a prime example. I mean, it's a circus in there, but yet our governor feels that's safe. I'm sure the churches can do a lot better than that. You know, I'd like to see the gyms, they can social distance to as well. Um and shortly thereafter, I'd like to see the parks open up. But uh yeah, I'm in favor of two point uh five, and I'd like to get to uh uh phase three really quickly here, so. That's where I stand.
Uh what is your idea on the uh the two point five for the two weeks? And bring both the mask and uh and some more recommendations back in a couple of weeks?
No, I'd like to see the re- masks removed right away. I just don't see the uh
We can't do that.
No, I know, I know, I'm just giving my opinion on where I stand. So if we cannot, I'd like to do a special meeting for next Wednesday to discuss the masks. I mean, it gives us a week to tou- to figure it out, um and we can uh go from there.
Okay, all right, okay, Mrs. Lewis?
Um well, uh in regards to the masks, since that's the last thing you spoke about, I I disagree with that. I think the masks have been very essential to protect our community. Um you know, we've become a combination of people who tend to be selfish, and it's all about me, myself, and I. And we all live together on this earth, whether we're old or whether we're young. And our older population is very vulnerable. Um we even have young kids now who are showing other signs of effects from the COVID virus. So our our statistics show very clearly by the reports that we get every day, Monday through Friday, from the county of Merced, uh that the masks are working. Um one can deny it, but it's physi- I mean, it's it's evident to me that they're in place and and, I mean, that they're working. And and I, you know, we're not in a grocery store or Walmart or Target for any long period of time. We're there to just do an essential job, which is shopping for household necessities um and bring them back home. So I I know that a lot of people feel like their constitutional rights are being treaded upon because they have to wear a mask, but if it protects your grandmother or your mother who may have medical issues, then it's worth it to me. I had one of my neighbors down the street uh pull me aside and say, hey, Deborah, you know, are we gonna, you're not gonna take the mask away because my wife has cancer and I have this, and it makes me feel more secure when I have to go out and grocery shop for my family. So I I just hope that people will think about others, other than just the fact that you have to wear a mask. There are people out there that have other medical issues that are very compromising, other than just the COVID nineteen. And I want to see those people still protected. Uh in regards to opening up the s- the city, um I agree that there is no business that's considered nonessential. Uh beauty salons, barbers, every business that's still closed down. Um Target, Walmart, we have uh percentages of people that can go in there at a certain time for shopping. But being the fact that those stores are extremely large, uh to the average person, there's a lot of people in there. And and I would hope that businesses who want to reopen restaurants and salons and all the others that are still closed, that they're gonna be very careful about not losing their licensing, not putting other people in jeopardy to help maintain the safety that we're trying to have here for our community as we move forward in these next phases. And I too want phase three to be here very quickly. So you know, hearing what what we hear to heard tonight, and hearing that people who have certain businesses uh are at the mercy of the state of California, and that they will consider pulling their license and maybe it be out of vindictiveness or what have you, not reissue those license to them, that's a very big thing to me. You know, their livelihood could be totally lost altogether outside of this COVID virus. So it's not just us that has to consider this, it's the owner of those businesses that have to consider whether or not that risk of losing their livelihood and losing their license to be to do business is worth it to them. But um uh I'll just say it right up front now, that I I I will not vote to remove masks in Los Vanos at this particular time. I I won't do it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Uh I think you've put that very eloquently. Um did I miss anybody? Okay, so let me tell you what we've, the city's done so far. The city has not written any tickets. The city has not uh uh collected one dime in fines. And Alex, can you confirm that for me, please, so I'm not speaking on it there?
Uh you are correct, Mayor.
Okay. And I think this is a time for cautious optimism. It's wonderful to hear that we're able to move forward and reopen some businesses. Uh but you know, as Mrs. Lewis, and I think uh Mrs. Santos and uh Mr. Jones, and I want to add my voice to that about the the problems with with the poor people that are that are keeping their businesses closed. But even as the county said, even as other cities have said they were cautious to make sure that if someone does open, that this is totally on their dime. For those businesses that are not on the list of businesses that can be reopened and that are licensed by the state, if you choose to reopen, you need to recognize that your decisions could have consequences. And what we've seen now are the the would be the state uh coming in and threatening enforcement actions. And we surely don't want to see that happen in Los Vanos or any other city in uh in uh in the county. Uh and we don't want to see owners suffer any more than they already have. So I I I'm kind of hearing some direction from the council that 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 I think people have to be resp- if businesses uh are there, they have to be responsible. And they have to be responsible for themselves with the huge investment that they have, and whether opening up is worth it or not. Is uh is that a bad summation, council, or is are we are we pretty much on the same page? Brett, I'll go to you first, I see your light on.
Yeah, I I think that we're on the same page. I mean, we can't dictate or we can't predict what the state's gonna do. And if the state's gonna go to come down and pull any licenses or revoke them or anything like that, uh we can only speak for ourselves here as a city. And you know, I just think it's ridiculous if we hold these small businesses back. I mean, it's uh, you know, I I'm not a school teacher, I'm not a city manager, I'm not a county worker or any other profession that has a guaranteed paycheck. You know, I'm a small business, we actually have to get out, work, and produce for our paycheck. You know, I feel for all these small businesses that are closed, and they gotta do what they have, what they feel is necessary to survive, you know, so.
Mrs. Johnsons, Santos?
Um and I'm sorry, this is in reference to the the two point five and 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 correct?
Yes, and 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 uh the people that may choose to uh uh to go further.
Um I I mean, at that point, um at this point right now, um everyone has a choice, that was what's once said to me. And um I feel as though if that choice is made, there is a risk involved. Um and so, yes, I I do feel like we are on the same page with it.
Okay, Mrs. Lewis?
Yes, I think we're on the same page with that.
Mr. Freya, any parting comments? Mr. Freya? I don't know if he's, do you know if he's dropped off, Sonia, or?
I'm here, can you hear me?
Oh, yes, yes, uh any parting parting comments after all those comments?
Um uh yeah, I want to be sure that everyone's really clear, uh as far as the city's concerned. I think it's wise for us to go ahead and allow the two, you know, go to two point five or uh part A. I still, and let's let's go little by little, you know, we we we've we've been very successful in how we curved it and curtailed it. But the idea is, let's get these businesses open and still keep our safety going. I like the masks uh for protection and uh because they, as far as I know, as far as you can tell, those graphs show they're working. And we keep this uh distancing and the masks, we still let people open their business. Once again, uh salons and people that are regulated by the state, if the state uh says they can't open their business, they are at their own risk, at their own peril. And I would highly recommend they do not take that risk because their entire future livelihood is at stake. And the cost to get that certificate, um my daughter's a cosmetologist, and it the cosmetology school didn't come cheap. And the fact that uh they they work so hard to get that, and 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 I know they're suffering really badly, and I would hope that that they wouldn't be in a situation where they they would feel they needed to take that risk. Um but and if there, I don't know if there's anything the city could do beyond that, uh and that really concerns me. But that's where I am now, I I hope I'm being clear. Uh two point five, let's let them everybody open as far as we can, as far as the county and the state will allow us to. And but still, let's keep those, let's keep the masks and the social distancing for now, and let's see how it does.
Okay, um I hope that statement was really clear that that uh, you know, I read, those businesses that are not on the list of businesses that can reopen, and uh there are licensing issues by the state. You choose this, then there are consequences. So it's not, this is outside of the city's purview, and we have to make that perfectly clear.
Mr. Mayor, if I might?
Yes, sir, go ahead.
Uh so just just uh me, in the interest of of clarity and clear staff um and for the council and the community. staff, um, and for the council and the community. So, uh, given, given that the county's attestation, I guess version two point O of their attestation plan was, you know, for the most part approved by the state of California, uh, we and businesses can move forward to two point five. So those businesses, uh, that are permitted to open at this point can open, uh, under certain guidelines. So, uh, there is no action necessarily, necessary, uh, by the council to move forward to two point five. So, uh, it was approved, so businesses, uh, within those guidelines can, can open. Um, secondly, um, eh, eh, the governor and this whole process has been a bit of a moving target. Um, I, I think that, that, at least the, the last briefing I saw from the governor was that, you know, stage three was, was coming. Um, I think what we heard from the county staff was that, um, they didn't know when it was coming, but, um, again, it's been a bit of a moving target, target, but it sounded like the governor was alluding to it was coming. I don't want to speculate, but, um, let's just hope that stage three is coming sooner rather than later. Um, then I guess lastly, I, I, I just want to be clear if there's an expectation of the council, uh, that something, something is coming back to you. Um, I know, uh, Councilmember Jones did suggest, um, a special meeting. I just don't want to miss, uh, and not fulfill the council's ex- expectation uh, on something coming back to you, uh, at some point, either at a next council meeting uh, or at a special meeting. So, uh, just looking for a little clarity there.
Sure. Then I'll make that perfectly clear. Let's put it on as a discussion item, uh, in two weeks. And, uh, the mask and just so we can renew, uh, you know, the support. And, uh, and I, I don't think it's a bad idea to have an, an ongoing discussion to see, uh, uh, statistics if that's helped or not. So, I, I think, uh, you know, it, it's, uh, uh, we owe it to, uh, to individuals to let them know that if, if, if we're enforcing something and that's something that we want to continue, why we're continuing and a little more education every two weeks doesn't hurt anybody. Is that clear?
Uh, clear for me.
Okay.
Want to make sure that's, that's coming from the council. So thank you.
All right. Hey, council, you have any problem with that?
No.
I see Veronica, okay? Mr. Jones?
Yeah, that will be fine. I, I just want to s- say one thing that I seen on the internet. That kind of makes us think a little bit. So this was a, a meme that I found. It says, "No one should be allowed to drive again until there are no fatal accidents or King consecutive days." Then we can slowly begin to phase in certain classes of people who begin driving again, but only at half the posted speed limit. Hashtag safety. Sounds pretty ridiculous.
Correct.
I feel like we can relate to that right now.
Yeah. Well, you know, it's, uh, it's, uh, that's why we have a, a five-member council and the, uh, and as I talked to the city manager, uh, part of everything is packed, uh, as a five-member council, uh, of which, uh, this, uh, this, uh, this group has done really well. And so, uh, we all have our differences and, uh, but, uh, putting it back on in two weeks, uh, for a discussion item, it, it meets some of the needs you talked about and, and gives us a chance, uh, to, to continue forward. And so I think we have to find, um, things that are going to, that are going to help, help our council members and still meet their needs. Uh, Mr. Freya and Mrs. Lewis, Mr. Freya, I'll go to you first. Uh, you okay with that?
Yeah. Thank you.
Mrs. Lewis, are you okay?
Uh, yes, I'm okay with that, but I, I do have one, uh, statement here. I think Mrs. Santos had, um, a statement that she wanted to make, uh, something in regards to signage in the stores regarding the COVID. Am I correct on that or, or did you want to do that later?
Um, I can clarify if that's okay, Mayor?
Go, do it now, under this topic, yes.
Okay. Um, I, I think, um, this will also help me clarify something I was saying in the jumble as well. Um, the, I was saying that I, I believe with the stores, um, as for the masks and, um, I guess in a sense, uh, kind of, uh, peeling back our, our ornaments a little bit. Uh, but as, as we said, we're going to be talking about this in a week or two. Uh, but, um, just putting it at a business level and allowing them, have, giving the stores the option to make sure they're protecting their people, but also the option as to whether they're forcing people to wear them inside of stores, I suppose. But if, does that, is that sound about what I was talking about, Deborah?
I, I'm not sure. I just know that you posed the question and you said that you are going to ask it later. So I have no idea what it was that you wanted to speak about.
Okay, I, I do apologize. Um, from right now, that's what I was thinking about. If it comes up, I will definitely stay to my comments at a later time.
So, Alex, that begs the point, and I forgot about this. Um, do we need to, uh, pass another health order that, uh, basically extends the masks to, uh, these new businesses that have come online? Or not pass one?
This, Mr. Vaughn may want to jump in, but it, it's, as far as I understand with, with the county order issued May eighth and with the, uh, guidelines that are being put forward by the state of California, uh, face coverings for, uh, employees and, and face coverings are not required. So if it's the desire of the council to require, i.e. shall be worn, um, in stage two point five businesses that are to reopen, then our current order would need to be amended to include those businesses. Um, am I correct, Mr. Vaughn?
Yes, totally correct.
So...
Yeah, right now, we're only covering a portion of the businesses that are open in two point five. So that's something we can bring back for discussion at the next meeting with some alternatives as to how that current order, um, could be amended to loosen it or to be more inclusive of the businesses that are opening.
But if these businesses are opening, uh, you know, I don't know how the rest of the council feels, but I would encourage them to wear masks. Uh, and you know, I, I got the question and, and at first I thought it was silly. Uh, but then it wasn't silly because, uh, someone else asked the same question. Uh, uh, Alex, do you want to give him the answer on eating, eating establishments? How do you go to an eating establishment and wear a mask?
Oh, um, I, I looked very quickly at the guidelines being put forward by the state of California regarding dine-in. Uh, and it, it references wearing masks. Sorry about that. Removing masks if you're eating or drinking. So, uh, the guidelines do reference masks and they recommend, uh, those folks who are eating and drinking, you'd have to, to remove the mask while you're doing that.
Okay. I just didn't want to get some question later on about, about how we're going to accomplish that. So thank you for the clarification.
Of course. Again, those are, are guidelines coming from the state of California.
Yeah. And, and so for these businesses, uh, are, um, uh, we're putting out information on our websites to make sure that everyone is covered with the proper signage and everything that they need. So if people come online, uh, they, they know exactly what's expected for individuals to walk in these businesses. Alex?
I'm sorry, Mayor, I, I missed that. What was the question?
Uh, so, so are we putting all the, uh, necessary information online so these businesses can easily access it to, uh, uh, to post the necessary, uh, information that they need to post in order to, uh, to open up?
Uh, yes, Mayor. We, we have, uh, posted, uh, as of this morning, information regarding the guidelines, uh, regarding the county order, um, and those are available on the police department's Facebook page. Um, we would, we'd also, we've through this process have been working with our small business owners. Um, and we've had some discussion at the staff level about working with the Small Business Development Center to try and, try and guide folks and business owners through this process. Cause it's, it's confusing, unfortunately. And we, we want to do what we can to bring, uh, the business owners together with the Small Business Development Center and us to, so, so those business owners can better understand those guidelines.
So one other comment, uh, at the supervisors' meeting yesterday, um, I think everyone was kind of, I don't want to use the, the phrase falling over each other, but they were to compliment Los Banos. Uh, and I want to extend my compliments, uh, to the staff and to the council, uh, because e- everyone is saying that the, uh, the masks have made a difference and that the steps that Los Banos took, uh, to, to, uh, uh, curb this disease, uh, is, uh, is, was remarkable and, and so it, uh, it worked. So we don't want to take any steps backwards. Uh, our ability to move forward, uh, with opening more business, we need to be smart and open businesses safely. So, uh, I, I, I appreciate all those comments.
Uh, so, if I might add?
Yes.
Uh, the, the, the county staff yesterday at the board meeting were, were, I would consider extremely complimentary of, of our efforts and of the council's efforts to, to, in, in doing what, what the council has done uh, in regards to face masks. So, um, at least yesterday, they were very complimentary. So I just, I just want to, um, recognize that.
Thank you. So I guess one of my last comments would be, let's work together to reopen Los Banos, but let's be safe and let's be smart. So, uh, we will bring that back in a couple of weeks, council, unless I hear anything to, uh, to modify the, uh, the health order. Is that, is that the correct verbiage, Alex?
Uh, yes, since this is an informational item only, not, no, no action. I think, um, I think based on the comments, the comments were very helpful. So, uh, thank you, Mayor and the council for, for, for the comments. Uh, we'll be back, uh, with some recommendations in a couple of weeks at the next council meeting.
We're, we're, our hearts go out to everyone. Where, I mean, people are hurting and, and we can only hope that, that we get through this as fast as we can. It's, 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 it's just demoralizing. Um, council, any parting comments on this subject before we go on? Uh, yes. Uh, let's go to Mr. Freya, any comments?
No, none.
Thank you, Mr. Freya. Mrs. Santos?
No comments at this point. Thank you.
Okay, uh, Mr. Jones?
Yeah, I would just like to say, you know, with, uh, masks regarding, uh, restaurants, how about we let the, uh, restaurant owners dictate what they feel's safe and comfortable with them and the patrons that go there, they can decide if that's acceptable to them or not. If they don't feel comfortable, just like with any business, they don't need to, uh, go there. So.
I don't think we should, could suggest that, but, uh, but, but thank you for your comment, though. Um, Mrs. Lewis?
No further comments.
Thank you. And thank you all for all your comments. It's, uh, it's, uh, I, I can see your heart is, is deep into this and, and, uh, and it, it affects, it affects all of us emotionally in different ways. Thank you. So if there are no other comments on the, um, uh, that item of item seven, COVID-19 status update, let's go on to the next. Let me shift my screen here. All right. And we're on to item eight. Public hearing. If you challenge a proposed action as described herein in court, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else raised at the public hearing described herein or in written correspondence delivered to the city at or prior to the public hearing. The public comment during the following public hearing item will be taken in real time via email. Once the public hearing is open, uh, the city council will pause the meeting in order to receive emails directed to the public hearing up to two hundred and fifty words and will be read into the record after resuming the meeting. Public hearing. To receive public comment consideration of the negative declaration, uh, SCH number two zero two zero zero two zero four four five and a conditional use permit for the allowance of on-sale and onsite consumption of alcohol through a type forty-one beer and wine ABC license in conjunction with a bona fide eating establishment for OA Holdings, number one, uh, LLC and MMCG DBR, Los Banos LLC, Chipotle located at fourteen twenty East Pacheco Boulevard, APN, uh, four two eight one four zero zero three zero. And city council resolution number six two one five approving negative declaration, SCH two zero two zero zero two zero four four five and approving conditional use permit two zero two zero dash zero two to allow the on-sale of beer and wine under type forty-one alcohol license for Chipotle located at fourteen twenty East Pacheco Boulevard, APN four two eight one four zero zero three zero. Okay, so now I'm going to pause the meeting. And, uh, probably I would say what, about five minutes, Alex? Would that be good?
Uh, maybe.
Mayor, I think you need, you need to go to the staff report first and then pause the meeting for...
Oh, I am so sorry. Let's, uh, I'm telling you, have anybody on video and not by Stacy, I'm sorry for overlooking you. Okay, go ahead.
There we go. So I am going to share my screen if you can give me a second. So I hope everyone can see that. Let me know. Can you see that?
We're good.
Okay. Great. All right. Okay. So hopefully, hopefully that's a full screen. It's not looking like it's a full screen on my end, so I apologize. Um...
Uh, you're good because, uh, what it does, it has the pictures of the people online and on the phone on top. So we can see it.
Good. Okay, great. Um, so the item before you is for Chipotle, conditional use permit, twenty twenty zero two. Uh, just a little bit of background on this particular project. Um, the planning commission, let's see. There we go. Uh, so the planning commission approved tentative parcel map twenty twenty zero one and site plan review number two thousand and sixteen dash zero six and conditional use permit number twenty twenty zero one, um, back in April. And then recommended approval of conditional use permit number, uh, two thousand and twenty dash zero two. Um, and that's what's before you tonight. Uh, the project site is located at fourteen twenty East Pacheco Boulevard. It is on APN four two eight one four zero zero three zero. This is within the highway commercial zoning district and it's designated commercial within the general plan. Uh, this property is, uh, primarily surrounded by commercial development. Um, it has, um, Starbucks and Deli Delicious to the west. It has the Spawny's to the east. To the south, it has the Caltrans courtyard. And to the north, it has existing residential development. According to CEQA, the California Environmental Quality Act, uh, staff prepared an initial study which was a negative declaration and we posted, uh, with Russett County Clerk as well as the Office of Planning and Research with the state of California. This, uh, public review period was from February twenty first, twenty twenty to March twenty second, twenty twenty. Um, and from that circulation period, we did receive one comment from Caltrans, um, which was a, uh... which was a form letter reminding the city and the applicant that an encroachment permit would be needed for this particular project for any work within the state highway right away. Then the planning commission approved the initial study and negative declaration on April 22nd, 2020. So, the use permit analysis is contained within the staff report, so I won't get into the specific findings. But there are specific findings for general use permit criteria, which are pretty broad. And then there's specific criteria for on sale, for on sale alcohol. And then as just as a reminder, ABC, the Alcoholics Beverage Control Board is issuing authority with the state of California. The census tract that this project is located in is 23.02. The city is divided into four census tracts and this particular census tract is the largest. And it does essentially consist of the eastern half of the city. The divider is 165, Highway 165, Mercy Springs. So, within this particular census tract, there are currently eight on sale licenses in use. And currently in the surrounding area.
This conference is no longer being recorded. This conference will now be recorded.
Within this particular census tract, there is Esplanias to the east, which has a type 47. Otherwise, there's mostly type 41s as listed within the staff report. This particular slide shows the floor plan and security plan. The cameras are highlighted and in yellow. They're, they do show interior and exterior cameras. And the door, the entrance to Chipotle, so this is a sideways glance. The entrance is actually on the left side of the screen. And there will be interior and exterior cameras as they stated and the conditions do state that it needs to be to the satisfaction of our police chief. This, this particular slide is the elevations. The focus tonight, though, of the city council is just whether to approve the conditional use permit, which is for the on sale of alcohol. But I did want to highlight the elevations here just so the council can see what the building is to look like. This was approved by the planning commission. It did go through design review. And this is actually not a prototype of Chipotle. They were able to amend their design, their, their prototype to coincide with the city's design guidelines and to be harmonious to the surrounding neighborhood. So, I do want to thank them for working with staff on achieving that balance. This is what the site plan would look like. So, again, before you, this evening, is the conditional use permit for Chipotle's alcohol use. But the entitlement that happened in April was for both Dutch Brothers, which is 800 square feet, and Chipotle, which is supposed to be 2,500 square feet. And how those buildings would sit and look with landscaping on that particular site with the 3D elevation. This slide shows the, it's an aerial, but it's a street view of the project site, which is currently empty. And historically, this was a liquor store. So, historically, this did have a type, it did have an alcohol license. It was a 21, which allowed for the off sale of alcohol, which is considered to be much more intense than a type 41 license. So, public comments, public hearing notices were published in the Los Banos Enterprise and Mail to the 300-foot radius of adjacent property owners on Friday, May 8th, 2020. And as of today's date, no written comments have been received. I do want to note, though, that I did speak to an adjacent property owner, the IUDIs regarding the fencing to be proposed along the property line between the, the Jeffrey Road residence and the proposed development. And within the site plan, there was a condition of approval that required a CMU, a concrete masonry wall, to be put into place with a pedestrian gate only to be used by public safety, which satisfied the IUDIs and any of their concerns with additional foot traffic going through their street. So, with that conversation, there was no written comments received, nor any formal comments. They were satisfied.
You know, can I interrupt you for just one second?
Sure.
Yeah. You know, I, I'm, I'm really glad to hear that, not only for the IUDIs, but there is a similar situation in back of, over by Food for Less, where it exits into an empty lot or a park. I can't remember which. And, and I'm telling you that was just, it was, it, 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 the planning, that's just horrible to have that there because you just have all this through traffic to the back of the, the area in that alley, delivery alley. So, I'm happy to see that, that, that condition is being met. Thank you.
No problem. Yeah, definitely understood and heard. So, with that, staff is recommending that the city council adopt resolution number 6215 approving conditional use permit number 2020-02 to allow the sale of alcohol under a type 41 alcohol license for on sale of beer and wine for Chipotle. And that concludes for any questions, as well as the applicant, Matt Norr, from the Orozco Group is on the line. I do want to add that this has actually been a couple of years, several years in the making and I want to highlight the Orozco Group's partnership with the city of Los Banos. Alex and the mayor have been a part of that partnership, going to ICSD, the International Council of Shopping Centers back in Las Vegas, meeting with the Orozco Group, meeting with Chipotle several times. And I think we finally have a deal that's coming through. So, we're really excited that our partnership and our relationship is, is starting to blossom and we're seeing fruit from that.
Well, thank you. What I'm going to do is, unless council has any comments right now, I'm going to take a, a five-minute break and Lucy probably has the information she needs. But I'll take a five-minute break. We've been going at this for two hours and 30 minutes. So, if that's okay. So, we'll be back. It's 6:31. We'll be back in about five, six minutes, right around there. Thank you. Okay, everyone, if we could come back, that would be wonderful. I'm here. Oh, good. The nice part about, the only nice part about these meetings is you're close to the refrigerator.
This is true.
Okay, who, who, who else do we have here? Anybody else? Were we waiting for anyone else? Let's see. Sonia, you here?
Sonia has left the meeting, but I've taken over the control.
Yeah, I'm here.
Oh, she's on the road.
Mark, are you here?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm here.
Thank you. Gary, you here? Lucy?
I'm here.
Mason, everybody here? Deborah?
I'm here.
Okay, all right, all right. Stacy, where do we, let's see, it's been seven minutes. Where'd we leave off now? Unmute your mic. I think you have to unmute your mic, Stacy. Oh, okay. There we go. What?
I apologize.
Oh, no problem.
We took a, we took a five-minute recess for the public hearing.
Yeah.
And we can read any of those comments that we received into the record. And also, if we can let the applicant speak, Matt Norr from the Orozco Group is representing Chipotle and the development group.
Hi, Matt.
Hi, good evening.
Well, let's read the comments and then you can respond to anything. Is that okay, Matt?
That's terrific. Thank you.
All right. Lucy, do we have any comments?
I have received no comments.
Director Melanie?
I have received no comments.
I have received no comments.
Thank you. Well, that was easy. Okay, Matt, you're on.
Great. Well, thank you, Mayor, fellow commissioner, council members. I want to first thank staff, Stacy and everyone else there at the city of Los Banos. This has been a very pleasurable and, and great experience working with, with the city. And we're very excited about bringing both Dutch Brothers and Chipotle to the city. As Stacy mentioned, you know, after the planning commission meeting, it was very successful, we went full speed into, you know, in kind of putting a little, the cart before the horse a little and, you know, kicking off the CDs, the construction documents, just knowing that, hey, this project is, is looking very favorable. And with staff's commitment, working through the whole coronavirus shutdown and still processing our application and having, you know, having these type of meetings, it's been fantastic. Tonight for the alcohol use, this is for the Chipotle project. They offer beer and margarita for onsite sale and consumption. The alcohol use of sale is probably maybe somewhere between 3% to 5% of their total revenue. So, it's not a very big portion of their sales, but it is, you know, a select offering that they do offer for customers when they come in. Chipotle does train their managers. They verify and make sure, ensure that they are certified. And same as well as with the, all the cashier, register folks. Any cashier person has to be certified and trained as well. Their dining rooms are very much open so that they can kind of also control and monitor. And as Stacy showed, there, we have a floor plan that has both security for interior and exterior control. And we fully agree and concur with the condition of the approval to submit the security plan to the Los Banos PD for their review and input as part of our permit application. Again, our hours for the Chipotle are from 10:45 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. So, this is not a very late night offer, operation. So, they do close earlier. It's not like a traditional bar or other type of store that has later hours. So, with that, I would be glad to answer any other questions and provide any additional information on the project. But again, we're very excited. You know, I know Dutch Brothers has already submitted their construction documents and we, we're working on ours. And we're looking forward to breaking ground later this year.
I'm sorry. I keep forgetting to click the mic. In these hard times, it's a real morale booster that this, these two projects are going forward. And I'm not going to speak for the council because I'm sure they want to say a few things too. But just want to say thank you for having faith in Los Banos.
Well, thank you. I, I think the credit goes really back to the city. You guys, the city's been just terrific and like the can do and will do, you know, attitude of just working through some of these difficult times. It's, it's been really refreshing.
Wow. Mr. Freya, do you have any comments?
No, except that I'm very pleased to see the projects going through, going forward.
Okay. Mrs. Santos, any comments?
I want to echo the same. Thank you so much for choosing us. We, I mean, thank you to the whole city staff, Stacy and the development team. I really appreciate it. I would love to see that come here.
Mr. Jones?
I'm excited to see it open, so.
Oh, I'm excited to see it open, so that's all.
Mr. Lewis?
Uh, I echo the same cements, uh, uh, comments, I'm excited to see the, uh, two businesses come. Uh, I just have one question of Stacy. On the slides that you show, uh, showed to the council, uh, slide number nine, uh, showed the building was white with black accents. Is that what the colors are going to be for, uh, both buildings on, on those slides?
The Chipotle is, uh, is white with, um, black accents. Um, the glazing on the windows, um, show that it's white, but it's actually, you know, clear windows, um, on Chipotle. And then on Dutch Brothers, it is white as well, um, white with, um, gray stones. And then, um, it has, um, a tower that is the Dutch Brothers blue. Um, and that was a part of the corporate, um, branding that we were able to make a compromise on.
Okay. Well, Matt, thank you very much for working with Stacy and the rest of the staff to bring these two companies here, really appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, Ms., Mr. Mayor, just a brief comment, if I may?
Yes, please, go ahead.
So, yeah, this, the, just to follow up on Stacy's comments, this is really a product of, of our economic development efforts. Um, you know, with the support of the council, um, and, and really a product of that ongoing effort. Um, and, and, you know, literally several years in the making with persistence by, uh, your community Economic Development Director Stacy. Um, and are traveling to ICSC over the last couple of years, working with Matt and the Orozco Group. But, um, a- again, really a product of that persistent economic development effort to, to work to attract, uh, new business and new retail, new food opportunities to the community. Um, and being more proactive, so, um, just, just want to provide that comment that, that's, again, uh, with the support of the council, um, the sorts of things that we're able to accomplish, um, here for the town and the community. So, that's it, Mayor.
Well, this group is done right by Los Banos. Thank you. Um, with that, uh, if there are no other comments, oh, we have to, we, also, we took, we took care of the public hearing, is that right, Mr. Vaughn? We're all right? Okay, uh, well, the public hearing is now closed, we've given a chance for, uh, for any comment, uh, uh, in real time, we did not have any. So the public comment, uh, our public hearing is closed, and I'm going to bring it back to council level. And so now we have City Council Resolution Number Six Two One Five, uh, as read by title, do I have a motion, please?
Uh, I would, uh, like to make that motion if I can, Mayor.
Please do, Mr. Faria.
Okay, so I'd like to move, City Council Adopt Resolution Number Six Two One Five, as read by title.
Do I have a second?
I will second that, Mayor.
Okay, it's been motioned by Faria, seconded by Johnson Santos to approve City Council Resolution Number Six Two One Five. Faria?
Yes.
Johnson Santos?
Yes.
Uh, Jones?
Yes. Yes.
Okay, Mrs. Lewis?
Yes.
Valalta, yes, carried unanimously. Matt, thank you.
Great, thank you, we're very excited.
So are we.
Terrific, good evening.
You too, you too. Uh, item nine, consideration of an ordinance amendment regarding the shopping carts. Ordinance Number One One Eight Four, uh, Uncodified Urgency Ordinance Amending Chapter Eight of Title Eleven of the Los Banos Municipal Code Regarding Shopping Carts. B, Ordinance Number One One Eight Five, amending Chapter Eight, Title Eleven of the Los Banos Municipal Code Regarding Shopping Carts. And who's going to be the shopping cart person? Who's gonna?
I will be mayor.
All right, go ahead.
All right, so we have a PowerPoint presentation for this item as well.
It's up.
All right, awesome, so we're going to dive right into this. Um, basically, I, I just want to preface this with, um, this particular ordinance is really, uh, divided into two categories, uh, retrieval and cleanliness. And so, um, as we get into this, um, also, I want to keep the, the council, um, focused that tonight, the recommendation is an urgency ordinance, so we can implement this ordinance effective immediately. Um, and then we also have a, um, regular codified ordinance, um, that would become effective, um, after the second reading within thirty days. Um, so getting into the presentation. Go there. Hmm. Bear with me. They try to. I apologize, all of a sudden, it's not wanting to skip through screens.
Uh, if it doesn't work, just give us an oral presentation, don't worry.
Okay, I'm actually going to, um, unshare this. We'll go back here. We're going to share a different screen. I'm pretty sure we can do this, okay. All right. Okay, there we go. Uh, it's still taking some time, it looks like it's just a delayed ration, but I'm going to keep going. Um, so, the California Business and Professions Code regulates shopping and laundry carts by making certain regulations for retrieval and disposal of those carts. Um, but this only applies to a shopping cart that has a sign that's affixed to it. Uh, the city's current ordinance requires shopping cart signage, um, for the management of shopping carts within Los Banos in accordance with state laws. So that's our existing, um, current shopping cart ordinance. Um, but despite the, the state laws and our current city ordinance, we still have abandoned shopping carts that remain a problem for the City of Los Banos. So the current situation, um, is that, uh, the majority of stores do have outdoor corrals to contain carts. These are near the entrances and in the parking lots to collect the carts. Um, and then the larger big box retailers have security devices that are affixed to the wheels to prevent carts from being removed. Um, those big boxes that have, um, those locking devices are, um, Save Mart, Walmart, Target, um, Food For Less also has it as well as the ninety-nine cent store. Um, and then we also have some stores that have poles affixed to the carts that prohibit the cart from being taken outside of the store. And for example, Rite Aid has, um, this in place, um, as well as the Dollar Tree. Um, there, the pole doesn't allow the cart to go past the door, um, so it, it requires the cart to stay inside. Um, but regardless of these measures in place, shopping carts are still, are being removed from stores, we see them being discarded throughout our community. So, we are recommending, um, a cart retention system and to update, um, this section of the code. So, we'd be requiring that the owners of these establishments, these businesses that have carts, manage their own carts and implement their own retention policy from the following options. And we would tie this to that business's business license as a condition of approval. Um, they can choose from following options that have to be approved by the Community and Economic Development Director. Um, some of those options are mechanical disabling devices on all of their shopping carts. This would prevent the cart from being removed from the premises. This is, like I said, like what Walmart, Target and Save Mart have. Uh, they could also choose to have an onsite security guard that would prevent customers from removing the carts from the premises. They could have barriers and/or barriers around the business premises, and this would be to prevent, um, also removal. Um, but this would need to be subject to approval by the fire chief. Um, they could obtain a security depart, deposit from customers for the use of shopping carts. So, an example, you could, uh, deposit twenty-five cents, um, to be able to get the cart. And then once you return the cart back to the corral, you're given then your twenty-five cents back. Um, or we could prohibit the use of shopping carts outside of the buildings unless accompanied by an employee. Um, so this is the idea of the pole attached to, uh, the shopping cart that doesn't allow, um, the cart to leave the, the building. Um, Rite Aid does do this, they have, then if a customer needs, has a large item that cannot be carried to their car, um, they do have special carts. And an employee, um, has to, um, accompany that customer to their car. Um, or we could have a contract retrieval service, so the business would hire a contract retrieval service. Um, so they would be responsible for, um, maintaining those carts and bringing them back as a retrieval service. And then, um, though, to leave it open to the businesses to, to set those provisions, um, and to provide flexibility, if it was reasonable. Then there's any other measure approved by the Community and Economic Development Director as a means of preventing carts from being removed from premises. So, we didn't want, you know, new ideas come out, new technology, or there's an, um, a preventative measure out there that staff hasn't thought of. We didn't want to just close the door on, these are the only options. So, um, as long as the business is able to prevent carts from being removed from the premises, um, staff is leaving that as an option. The next section of the ordinance really deals with cleanliness and sanitation. And a number of studies pre-COVID nineteen indicate that without proper cleaning, washing and disinfecting shopping carts and baskets, it poses a significant health threat to our community. Um, there are studies within the staff report, they're attached as, um, as supplemental to the staff report. Um, one of which studies stated that seventy-two percent of eighty-five shopping carts that were sampled had coliform bacteria. Um, and that total bacterial levels are far greater than those found in public restrooms. So, pretty frightening that that is what is on our shopping carts. And most of the time, and I'm being a mom of young children, I know that's where I'm putting my kids. I'm putting my kids in the cart, it's just easier to, to do my grocery shopping with them, um, pre-COVID. And, um, now I think I'm going to think twice about that. Um, but it seems that, um, these are, um, bacterial bodily bacterials that are, um, left on these carts. Um, as well as from the meats that are within the grocery store. So those are left, um, on the carts according to these studies. And, um, there's little attention that's been given, um, to the shopping carts, which can pose a health threat, um, to our community. So staff believes that regulating guidance on acceptable cleaning measures will reduce the risk to the public from contaminated shopping carts and baskets. And that this is especially important right now as we're in the middle of a, of a pandemic and trying to maintain sanitation and cleanliness for our community. So we do have some recommended cleanliness program. Um, just like the retrieval program, this would allow the cart owners the ability to implement their own cart cleanliness program from the following options. And this would, again, be tied to the business license as a condition of approval. So they could choose to use an onsite cleaning and/or sanitizing system, or they could have pressure washing and sanitizing, or steam cleaning and sanitizing, or any other measure approved by the Community and Economic Development Director as a means of cleaning, sanitizing, or eliminating exposure to contaminants that may be found on shopping carts and/or baskets. So again, we didn't want to close the door on possible options, especially in the future, um, as technology, um, progresses. Uh, we wanted to be able to, um, make that call as, um, reasonable, and as businesses come forward. So the proposed ordinance before you, um, not only has a retrieval program, um, within it, and it has a cleanliness program, um, that is really, um, to be implemented by the business owners and tied to the business license. But it, um, also proposes that every cart owner shall lock or otherwise secure all their shopping carts when the business is not open for business. Um, what we have found, um, is that even in the big, the larger big box stores, that, um, if the carts are not put away, locked away at, at night, um, secure, that, um, people within the community are still taking those carts. And that any shopping cart or shopping basket retrieved from off-premises shall be cleaned and sanitized prior to the next customer use. And that every shopping cart and/or shopping basket owner, um, shall provide at each customer entrance with prominent signage, a cart handle disinfectant wipe dispenser and a hand sanitizer dispenser. Um, so in addition to their cleanliness program, um, they would also have to have, um, at all of their entrances, uh, a disinfectant wipe as well as a hand sanitizer dispenser. So the environmental findings, um, this particular item is categorically exempt per Section One Five Five Zero Six One, B Three for projects which clearly have no significant effect on the environment. Um, this is a policy, um, that does not have an environmental effect. Um, and actually, the, the use of the development has already been, um, analyzed, and so the use of shopping carts are, are covered within. The recommendation before you tonight is that the council would do two things. First, adopt ordinance Number One One Eight Four, uh, which was for the Uncodified Urgency Ordinance, amending Chapter Eight of Title Eleven of the Los Banos Municipal Code Regulating Shopping Carts. And then two, waive the first reading and introduce ordinance Number One One Eight Five to amend Chapter Eight of Title Eleven of the Los Banos Municipal Code relating to shopping carts. Um, and that concludes my presentation, and I'm here to answer any questions. As the first city attorney that helped draft, author this ordinance.
Thank you, thank you. Um, any council members, any questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Just, uh, Councilmember Lewis, I, I don't have any questions, but, uh, I want to tip my hat off to our, um, city attorney Bill Vaughn, who spent copious hours in drafting this ordinance. Um, I probably inundated him with a, a lot of materials about shopping carts that, uh, uh, caused him to pause in some way. But I, I really want to thank him for, uh, making this happen, and Stacy, thank you for, uh, working with him on this ordinance. It's, it's an ordinance that doesn't take away anybody's civil rights in any way, but it does protect all of our, uh, community. Because each and every one of us have to go shopping at a store somewhere and touch and handle a shopping cart. So, um, it's, I think it's a positive thing for our community. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Any other comments from any other council members? Okay, so we have two actions, actually, I think three, don't we have to waive the first reading, Bill, of, uh, no? Uh, B?
Uh, so let me explain, the purpose of the urgency ordinance is to get the ordinance up and running immediately upon adoption. And you can do that based on the findings in that urgency ordinance, that, the current health crisis, that this kind of adds to the protection of the public in terms of the cleanliness of the shopping carts. of the public in terms of the cleanliness of the shopping carts. So the urgency ordinance, you've done it before, it doesn't take a first reading, it just takes an adoption by a four-fifths vote of the city council. And then there's a little city attorney trick and that is to right behind that adoption to start the normal procedure, just in case there's a challenge to the urgency ordinance, we'll have already started the first reading of what we're calling the codified ordinance. So in case there's a challenge of the urgency ordinance, we would only lose like 30 days. So both ordinances are identical except that one requires a four-fifths vote, one requires your regular waiving of the first reading and introduction, which you're doing tonight. You'll see the, you'll see that, I think it's 1185, you'll see it come back, you'll see it come back for a second reading. Once the second reading is done on that one and 30 days lapses, the urgency ordinance terminates by its own language. So it's, we thought that had there not been this pandemic going on, we probably wouldn't have chosen for the urgency route, but based on some health concerns that the community is involved in right now, that this was the best way to roll. So yes, you would call for adoption of urgency ordinance and just a four-fifths vote and then waive the first reading.
And introduce.
Introduce the second ordinance.
Got it, got it, got it. Okay, so Mrs. Lewis, why don't you take a stab at this one, okay? Not a stab, but you know, just do it.
I'll introduce it, thank you for the opportunity. With that, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to introduce ordinance number 11.
Adopt, adopt.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm on the wrong one. Adopt ordinance number 1184 as read by title.
Okay, do I have a second?
Mayor, I'd like to make a second on that.
Thank you, thank you. Motion by Lewis, second by Jones and I'm going to do the roll call. Mr. Santos?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Lewis?
Yes.
Valalta, aye? Tom, are you there?
Can you hear me now?
Yes, I can.
Okay, yes. My mute took, my, took me a while, I didn't want to unmute. My phone likes to shut me up, so I guess. Thanks.
Okay, so we have five out of five, passes. Mrs. Lewis, go on to item B and this is the introduction and waiving of the first reading.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. With that, I'd like to make a motion to waive the first reading and introduce ordinance number 1185 as read by title. Two motions, okay. I'll go back.
The introduction.
Yes, I'll make a.
Waiving the first reading.
Waiving the first reading, thank you. I'd like to make a motion to waive the first reading of ordinance number 1185 as read by title.
Okay, Mr. Jones?
I'll second that.
Okay, motion by Lewis, second by Jones for the waiving of the first reading of 1185, ordinance number 1185. Faria?
Yep.
Johnson Santos?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Valalta, yes. Mrs. Lewis?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to introduce ordinance number 1185 as read by title.
Mr. Jones?
Second please.
Okay. Mr. Faria?
Yep.
Johnson Santos?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Valalta, yes. Thank you, motion carries. Let's go on to item 10, consideration adoption of city council resolution number 6216 authorizing the city manager to execute a professional services agreement with Vineer Construction Management Incorporated for project management services for the new police department facilities Who's going to take this one?
It's mine. Good evening, Mayor and council members. This is a, as the recommendation said, staff is wishing for the city council to adopt resolution 6216 to enter into a professional service agreement with Vineer Construction Management for the project management services for the new police facility. And with that, along with that, authorizes the city manager to execute the professional agreement. The administration of this agreement will be performed by the Public Works Director, City Engineer, and the set agreement is not to exceed $68,835 for phase one of the pre-designed services. You know, the current facility, the police department is located at 945 Fifth Street. I usually would say right next to where you're at right now, but everyone's in different spots. It's 51 years old, obviously outdated, obviously has issues with infrastructure needs, crowded, really an impediment to timely and proper execution of routine public safety. And it's also, there is also a spread of several facilities for the police department around. So as a response to that, new police station building has been talked about for quite a while and over the last several years, it's gotten a lot more serious. So a little bit of timeline on that would be, in January of 2018, a purchase and sales agreement was entered into the city of Los Angeles and that is to purchase that 3.6 acres of land located just south of the new courthouse on G Street. That was for the new police station site. Jumping almost, almost a whole year ahead, but on October 17, 2018, a professional services agreement was done to prepare a facility needs assessment report for the police facilities. This particular report was finished and presented to council on September, about a year later, September 18, 2019, and it was adopted by council as a, like a skeleton framework of where we're going with the police needs. The big one that is the newest one on the board here is we have the 3.6 acres was actually purchased on April 21, 2020, so just recently it was purchased, which means all the stipulations in the sales agreement were met, the site was cleaned up to the level that it had to be cleaned up, it was leveled, a land use covenant was recorded against the site as to how to deal with the construction in the areas where there was some arsenic. So that was all done and that was all recorded. So now there's a piece of land out there that's very cleaned up, if you go up there you can see just, just west of the courthouse is that piece of land. So the next step was to go into kind of a financial strategy and a financial reality of building the structure and building the police facilities. And at the same time, we were looking at putting on a project management team to help us with the whole process all the way through. So it was very logical for us to just to make this financial part of it phase one of the project management RFQ, so it didn't have to go out RFQ after RFQ. So basically we released that in January 9 of 2020. On February 7, we had four project management firms that submitted the RFQ to the city clerk and they're listed in your staff report. We had a four-person review panel, there's actually more than that, there was pretty much, pretty much the whole of police facilities needs task force reviewed this and indeed unanimously approved the veneer as going forward to negotiate an agreement with at that time. They had the experience, they had local flavor to themselves, they hadn't worked here before and they also were very experienced on the financial strategy part of it, which was very important to us. The agreement was, you'll see in there, we have the agreement and it's, it only authorizes phase one of the pre-designed services for that percentage lump sum basis of 68,835, but it does approve them to be the project management team on the whole project. So this is sort of like the design contract we did with Mark Thomas for the Pioneer PSR. There's actually three phases in this agreement, but only the first phase is being agreed, we're asking you to approve tonight. The other phases can only be approved when I bring addendums back to you and the scope is pretty, pretty out there. The first phase is basically looking at the financial strategy and reality of building this, the 30, 25 to 30 million dollar structure. And it basically, you know, some of the things we need to look at is establishing a realistic budget for, and there's three major things we're going to be looking at. One would be a 30,000 square foot traditional design, go out to bid and build it, traditional, traditional building where architect comes in and designing. The second one we'd like to look at is a 30,000 square foot, a design, build and delivery to us. Someone comes in and says, we'll design and build it for you and deliver it for you. It could be leased over 30 years, there's several options to how to buy that from that design builder. And the last, and another one we want to look at very intently is a 30,000 square foot building, it may go down, we don't, we're not sure depending on the cost factors, of a modular design build. Have someone comes in that has a modular experience and do the same thing above, design it and build it for us. Modular isn't the same thing as what you might have thought about 10 years ago. Modular buildings are extremely nice, there's a lot of new hotels being done with it, I believe there's a police station courtroom that the, some of the team went down to look at, it's very nice. And it's supposed to reduce costs. So the main, the nearest big thing about this in the group that looked at them on this RFQ was they have experience in all these items, including the modular, which is hard to get. So we can get them as a nonpartisan, they, their hands aren't into the modular industry, they're not into the design building, just as a level consultant to us, look at all these, these different ways of looking at it. And then they'll look at the delivery method evaluation, look at what's, how we can deliver here, what's the best thing for our city, what's the best thing for this, for the valley at this time. And of course, a very important one is the funding opportunities and cash flow analysis. They'll be working with the whole staff, especially finance, to review and look at the funding opportunities available and how to pay for this in a cash flow situation, especially looking at the situation we're facing now with the tightening of belts and all. So we have to look at that now. So that's their first phase. They scheduled that for about 60 days, it probably will be longer, but not because of them, it'll probably be longer because of staff review and going back and forth with them because we're at the budgets, we're at the budget stage now, so finance is very busy, but there's going to be a lot of back and forth about the financial aspects of this at the moment. The other phases will be phase two, that's the design of the PM services, that's actually going in and working with the architect, helping the city with an RFQ, actually looking at, doing a peer review on it, making sure we're getting what we want, especially if you start doing design build, you have one chance to get the kind of building you want and then they deliver it to you. You don't go in the middle of their 50% build and say, no, I want to change the fixtures, doesn't work that way. They bid a whole lump sum thing and that's how they get their return. So it's very important that at the beginning you do have that very strict peer review if we go that direction. And then of course, phase three is the one we're all looking forward to, it's the construction project managing services. That's the actual construction, going out, looking at the plans and make sure that the person in the field is doing it, per the plans, looking at submittals, reviewing those for the city, approving invoices with the city's project manager at the same time, taking over much of this, which is, well, on this side of the job is definitely needed a consultant for this, there's no question about it. The city attorney has approved this agreement as a form, worked very hard with us to get this agreement done, I appreciate it very much. And our insurance carrier also has approved, has approved the attached insurance certificates, which is, which means if it is so, your wish to approve this, it's ready to sign by, by city manager, we have that all done. The $68,835 has been budgeted in this fiscal year and next fiscal year and it's in the police department capital improvements professional services item and there's a budget number 245, 421, 100, 231. This is a really important step. It's regardless of how the financial situation delays or doesn't delay the project, we need to get to this step to know that issue. So it's really important to go forward, I have a really good confidence in this particular project managing team. So with that, I'll turn it back to you, to the council.
Thank you. Any comments from council? Wow, Mark, you answered every question?
Can you hear me, Mayor?
No, I just think you're all sorry. I'm hungry, sorry.
Go ahead, Tom.
Oh, sure, yeah, I'm pleased to see us moving forward with this.
We all are, thank you, thank you for that comment.
I also wanted to make one more comment and that the design build, general law cities couldn't use it before, but we can use it now, the laws were changed, correct?
It's not exactly called a design build now, it's called a lease, leaseback and yes, you can use, cities can use it now. It's under different, it's got different requirements now and all, so.
Thank you very much, very pleased to see.
Okay, any other questions?
One other item, I'm sorry, I'd be, I'd be remiss not to say this, my, a friend of mine, the former assistant public works director had got this project to this stage before he retired, it's a wonderful job, great to get on this, thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Would that be Greg Pimentel?
Yes, it would.
All right.
And if you haven't seen him, I haven't seen him since he left.
No, I haven't either, I haven't either. Greg, if you're watching, I doubt it, but thank you. Okay, so with that, do I have a motion to approve resolution 6216?
I would make that motion, Mayor, if I may.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
All right, so we have a motion by Faria, second by Johnson Santos for the approval of resolution number 6216 as read by title, all in favor. Oh, I'm sorry, sorry, wait, 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 don't answer me. Faria?
Yes.
Johnson Santos?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Good.
Yes.
Valalta, yes. Okay, let's go on to item 11, consideration adoption of city council resolution number 6217, authorizing the city manager to execute a cooperative agreement with the state of California through the Department of Transportation, Caltrans, to provide oversight in the development of a project study report, project development support, PSR, PDS, for the improvements on Pioneer Road widening project at locations where Caltrans has jurisdiction. Mark, we're going back to you.
Sure, thank you, Mayor. This is another, this is another really good, feel-good project that's really taking leaps and bounds, I think. This is just going into a cooperative agreement, we're asking you to approve a cooperative agreement through this resolution with Caltrans, basically gives them the permission or the right to start working with our consultant and myself and get the PSR done, which is also called project initiation document, all kinds of abbreviations, it's basically getting the PSR done so we can qualify for some funding options starting next year. They've already, they wouldn't, they wouldn't say this, but they've already been working with Mark Thomas even without the agreement in place, which is, I appreciate that. So this job is really going along good, Mark Thomas is making a lot of, lot of advances. One of the big advances, just to give you some, just to give you some updates where we're at with this, one of the big advances, we did meet with the county, it's a verbal and an email where they authorized the city to go ahead and use the city standards and specs also in the county area. So we have state, county and city along the proposed Pioneer Road corridor. So the county did approve to go ahead and use city standards on there because eventually down the line it'll all be city, we haven't talked about maintenance of that road yet, that will come up soon. Some of the financials to talk to, just to bring up to speed on that, and I know you remember these, there was 8.5 million in regional money that was allocated to the, up to the right away stage and that brings us right up to the construction. Now that is a tax measure, that is a sales tax measure, so we'll have to see, and I'm not saying it's, it's going to happen or not, if 8.5 actually computes to 8.5 in the same timeline because of, of the tax issues now and issues like that. But that's what's been committed our way so far and we'll have to keep track of that and make sure. The other item of funding that we do have in place already, the RTIF funds that were given back to us, not given back to us, that went back to the rightful owners, about $850,000 was in RTIF and was designated only for Pioneer Road, it was the only regional project it was designated. We've probably gotten into that about 20, 30,000 already, so we still have 800,000 to be used in, in any, any way we want on this. In the, in any, any way we want on this, so we've been using it for some studies that may not have been programmed. We'll use it for some design costs, if we can save some of that eight point five million and get that projected to construction, we, we'll go towards construction. Um, the other thing that we just found out, we had a four hundred and ninety thousand dollar federal earmark to direct it towards right away acquisition on this project. This is a federal earmark that was running out, it was for the bypass. And, and with MCAG's uh help and assistance, we got that earmark back to this project. Um, and that doesn't have to be allocated or commissioned to us till September of two thousand twenty-two, which is perfect timing for the right away and other issues. So really, you're looking at, that's all, you know, that's one point three million besides eight and a half that we, that we got allocated, so we are moving forward. Um, slowly but surely, and we have other items we'll be looking at, we'll be looking at this. Um, ATP application for sidewalk, we'll be looking at all kinds of. Little parts of this project that may be able to get funding through a lot of different sources. Uh, by taking the earmark, we are a federal job, but we're going to be a federal job anyway because that's the only way we're going to get this money. Um, now currently, uh, we are doing the specific plans and one of them specifically is Pioneer. Uh, we haven't had the third community meeting, we're going to have it, I believe it's June twenty-third, uh, a virtual meeting. It will come forward with the recommendation of what, of what uh. Area we want to go through, which is, which is the, the projects, uh, I'm sorry, which is scenarios we want to do. The real only question is the scenarios on the west side. And they were basically go all the way to Volta, which is extremely expensive, really couldn't afford it. The other one was going on the east side and connecting to the signal at the Corset College. Highly expensive, uh, and also great impact to land owned in the county by, by farmers, so that was a. Pretty big impact and to get them behind us, to get the county people behind us, that was a problem, and if you cross the bridge. You're talking, you know, eight million dollars added to this construct, uh, construction cost. So what has come up, the, a third option did come up, and it looks like at this point, it is the one we're directing. Mark Thomas to look into at the PSR, it will be at the virtual, it'll, it'll be. Noted at the virtual, this is the, this is the preferred alternative, is to go through an approved subdivision, it's not built yet, but go through an approved subdivision. Which is probably ninety percent in the city limits already, on the east side of the creek. It, it will require them to do a little more right away along that area, it will require a separate intersection. Uh, east of the current college intersection, uh, and uh. And we already have talked to a little bit to Caltrans about this, about relaxing their uh. Requirement always to come up to speed with the uh warrants, because obviously that would warrant anything, there's nothing there. But they're already looking at it, operations already is looking at, and from that, from that point of view, is cooperating with us. Kind of um, going a little bit out of the box on requirements, and for engineers, that takes a lot. Um, and we're going to see if we can, you know, put it there, and it's actually a, a, we so far, and this is, this is nothing official, we. We are working with the developer and this, and they are working with us, there's no agreements or anything else on, on this issue, but. Uh, we are working with them now, uh, and like I said, this stuff will be presented to, to the, uh, at the workshop. Um, the rest of the right away, uh, is pretty well set in place, uh, there's a lot less. When we first did this, if you remember, we did a bubble drawing, which I'll never do again. Which showed about five hundred feet of right away tape on each side of the road, I'll never do that again because it just, it. Created a monster that really wasn't there, although we are taking land, we are taking some land, it is, it's necessary. But it's, it's very, compared to what people thought it was, where we were going to wipe out everything. Uh, and all their ancestral land, it was, it wasn't good what we did, uh, I learned something in that process, so. Uh, it's a good planning tool, it's not a very good workshop tool, too. So we'll be doing, so this is what we're asking for, to go forward, another concept here would be. Uh, there's a listing of what Caltrans needs to do, and a very important one is, uh, Caltrans. Will be billing us thirty thousand dollars for the work outlined in the agreement. Agencies do this, they have to recover their time, and then there's nothing wrong with that, it's, it's, it's fair. Uh, I, as long as they're uh responding to us quickly, which they seem to be willing to do on this. We have, uh, we have their director's approval on all this, it, it's a, it's a fair to recover their costs, I think.
That's not the problem, you got to get the money out of Sonya first.
Uh, no, this, this stuff's budgeted, that's budgeted, we have to get the construction running, Mike, as you know. The clo- excuse me, Mayor, sorry, this is a little.
All right, you're all right.
Little too, too informal on the computer here, sorry.
You're fine.
So uh, fiscal impact, uh, the cooperative agreement is thirty thousand, it is, it is in the budget for this year and next year. Uh, the regional transportation impact fee, technical service, so this will be part of that eight hundred and fifty thousand dollar pot. That was returned to us for regional transportation, we'll actually take the thirty thousand out of, out of there. Um, and I just hope that uh, this is exciting, we are moving along, um. I would never really, I would honestly never thought we had a chance at the PSR before the next cycle, and we're going to beat that, that deadline, so.
Wow, wonderful, and uh, and uh, just to let you know that the Measure V was way overperforming. And that money would have went into, it would have gone into a separate pot, so if it was overperforming, maybe. Now that it might uh not perform, overperform as much, and maybe be at the estimate, we still might be okay for the uh, for the money.
Yes, that's what, that's, yeah, that's what I was hoping for, I remember they mentioned at the Western Regional, at the Western Regional Meeting, that would be wonderful.
Yeah, so uh, so the other thing is, uh, I don't want to talk about it tonight, but we had a good meeting with Caltrans today too, so uh, you can give us reports on that at another time, thank you. Okay, uh, so let's go to uh, resolution six-two-one-seven, council members, any, any comment? Uh, Mr. Fariah? Mr. Fariah?
No comments, this time.
Thank you, Miss, Mr., Mr. Santos?
No comments, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Jones?
No comments.
Thank you, uh, Mrs. Lewis?
No comments.
Thank you, and I have no comments, do I have a motion?
Mayor, I, I can make an emotion.
Okay, I thought you were going to make a motion for a minute. Okay.
I would like to make a motion to adopt the resolution number six-two-one-seven.
Uh, thank you, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, uh, okay, a motion by uh Johnson Santos and a second by Fariah. For the approval of resolution six-two-one-seven is read by title, uh, Fariah?
Yes.
Johnson Santos?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Vialta, yes, all right, very good, let's go on to item uh twelve, advisement of public notices, and there are no reports tonight, is that correct? Okay, thank you, let's go on to item thirteen, city manager's report.
Uh, not a whole lot this evening, Mayor, just, it is, it is good to see uh, uh, projects being moved forward other than. Uh, what appears to be our over, our preoccupation with COVID. Uh, but to, to see projects like Chipotle, Dutch Bros, uh, the police station and, and Pioneer move forward. Um, it, it's, it's good to see those projects continue to move forward. Um, we are um continuing to work behind the scenes on projects like that, so. Uh, we are, we are progressing, um, even though our doors are closed and soon to open back up to the public. Uh, we're working hard behind the scenes, not only in public works, but uh, police, fire, finance, public works. Uh, to continue to provide services to the community. Um, thanks to all those employees continuing to do that, uh, which continue to be under incredibly unusual circumstances, so. Anyway, that's all I got, Mayor, uh, thank you, uh, Mayor and Council for uh, your patience as we. Uh, do these online platforms sorts of meetings, um, thank you, that's it.
Okay, and then uh, when we go through the budget workshop, we'll talk about the projects that uh, we've had in place, is that correct?
Uh, yes.
Thank you, all right, let's go on to uh, city council member report, oh, I'm sorry, report of update. MCAG County Association of Governments, MCAG and Measure V Committee, um, very short. We're still continuing to work on the expansion of the uh, the, the waste site on the uh, the west side at Billy Wright. And uh, again, I bring it up every meeting, it's an important issue uh, for the survival of the west side. Uh, because we need a place to, to dump our garbage, it's not, not a very uh, uh, pleasant subject to talk about, but if we didn't have it, it would be a smelly subject. So uh, what we want to do is continue to work on that, and we're working on a two hundred acre expansion. So uh, council, please keep this in mind, and we need to keep it on the forefront. And uh, then uh, our um. Our other projects uh, that, that we're talking about, we're working closely with Caltrans, but Mark will give you an update later on that. And uh, and now we have the PSR going with uh Pioneer, so uh, very excited about these projects, thank you. All right, let's go on to item fifteen, city council member reports, tonight we'll start with Mrs. Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, um, I, I know we had a lot on our agenda tonight, and um. As our city manager said, uh, we have a lot of issues around the COVID, and certainly. Uh, it's my opinion that I, I really want to see businesses open back up as quickly as possible. And um, certainly, I, I don't see any business that's ever having to be, to have been nonessential. But that's what the governor declared in the state. And I hope that as things move forward, that um, uh, he will quickly see that small businesses are the backbone. Of each community of the state of California. And without those businesses, those revenues dry up, well, taxes dry up to the state of California as well. So thank you um, for the time, and thank you for the people who sent in the comments, and uh, with that, I have nothing further.
Thank you, Mrs. Lewis, thank you, uh, let's go on to Mr. Fariah, any comments?
Uh, I want to thank everyone for all the hard work and some great trying times. Uh, keep it up, stay safe, hopefully we get as much opened up as possible, quickly as possible. Um, and then we can move forward and hopefully get life back to normal as soon as possible, take care and stay safe for everyone.
Yeah, you, you mentioned the operative word, stay safe and uh, open up smart. Okay, uh, Mrs. Santos?
Thank you, Mayor, um, I also want to say thank you, thank you to everyone at, with the city, um. Uh, other council members, thank you so much, um, with everything that is said, it, it just, I definitely need to be respected that you guys are doing a wonderful job in what you do. And, and by allowing us to at least put some input on there with you guys doing all the, all the great things you do every day, I really appreciate and eternally grateful. Um, and I, as everyone else said, please stay safe out there, um, be smart about everything, um, like. Yeah, just be smarter while you're out there and stay safe, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jones?
Yeah, actually, Mayor, we were uh, thinking uh, next meeting possibly holding it back in the chambers, what's your thoughts on that?
Uh, but yeah, I mentioned at the beginning, I, I want to do that. And if it's not the chambers, then it's the community center, if we want to accommodate visitors, uh, so we can spread out. But we need to get back to normal, uh, I kind of surveyed and polled my uh, my, my fellow mayors and uh. And they're pretty much back to their council chambers, and we did that right before we social distanced and spread everybody out. Uh, uh, on, on the dais, uh, so I think we can do it again, and I'd like to get back to normal, I, I just said, this is too sterile of environment for me. I don't like this, uh, it works, but uh, but it works in a pinch, and, and I want to get back.
All right, excellent, thank you.
Are you okay with that?
I, I'm good with that.
All right, all right.
Thank you.
Anything else, Mr. Jones?
No, that'll be all.
Okay, uh, uh, Veronica, you okay with that?
Sorry, that's fine by me.
Okay, Mrs. Lewis?
Uh, for me, we would have to practice social distancing on the dais, uh.
Oh, of course.
I wouldn't want to be sitting that, as close as we did in the past until uh, things are better.
Uh, no, 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 I, I was thinking of moving out Alex and the attorney, so.
I thought maybe you would get off the dais.
Oh, it's okay, I'll do it too. If you want to social distance even more, I'll go down with Alex and the attorney.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
That's my comment.
I'm fine with that, okay, uh, Mr. Fariah?
I'm good with that, I recommend the community center so we can open it all up.
Sure, then we can really social distance, Mrs. Lewis, we'll put you way off on the quarter, we're okay.
Mayor, we put the mayor in the lobby.
And Mr. Mayor, not, not to distract, um. I think we're veering off agenda.
Pardon me, we're veering?
Yes, I think.
All right, but thank you, Alex, for really miss that. I see Bill's got his arms folded, so I'm going to end this. So, so anyway, uh, so our plan is to uh, to basically uh, direction. I'll mention that word, uh, that we go back to, to some type of normalcy and, and if it, if it's uh, isn't the, if it isn't our council chambers, then my recommendation would be the community center. So with that.
And continuing to veer, but I think we're wrapping up, so.
Oh, yes, I think we are, I think we are, I won't veer anymore. So, so with that, it is, uh, for Lucy's benefit, it is uh, seven thirty-nine, unless anyone else has any further comments. I will adjourn this meeting at seven thirty-nine, and thank you all very much, thank you.